Go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, October 3rd, 2022. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance students for today?
Yes, thank you, Jessica. Good morning, everyone. So today, we have Jade Ornelas with us this morning. She is a 4-H student and will be here to receive a resolution in just a few minutes, but for now, will be leading us in the pledge. And she is a 10th grader from Canotillo High School. Jade?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge, I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the flag, allegiance, the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you for leading us off on this beautiful Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jade.
And now, we will receive an invocation by Gerald Marcus, member and co-founder of Join Us For Justice, the El Paso chapter of Americans United for Separation of Church and State.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. As we gather this Monday morning, I wish to thank you for your, for your wise and capable leadership, for the time you give to our community, and for your patience. The nature of our humanity makes our, makes our time a valuable commodity, and our patience is the gift that we give to others. The human condition is the great leveler. It makes us humble. Being humble, being human, gives us empathy. We understand pain and loss, and that happiness comes from within. Our humanity levels the playing field due to the inevitable forces of nature, the need for water and food and sleep, the limitations of age and health. We identify with the struggles of others. We share in the need for love, comfort, and rest. Our individual journeys traverse a parallel path. We are each bound by the existential nature of our shared humanity and of life's expectations, recognizing that we are all in this together. We know and accept that our spiritual guide, the deity or the power that speaks to our soul, matters only to each of us as an individual. That which brings us comfort, wholeness, and ours, and hope, is ours alone. May you go in love and light. May you guide with an easy hand, teach with gentleness, and follow with open-mindedness and a desire to understand. May you have the courage to be vulnerable and to accept dissent. May your honesty come from integrity, and your goodness be true and consistent. Thank you, and have a wonderful week.
Well, thank you. You're always welcome. Thank you for being here on Monday for us. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to make any opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, I just want to welcome all of you on behalf of myself and our Commissioners. We welcome you to Commissioners' Court. I always thank you for, for being here and being part of government, and we're also always excited about some amazing resolutions that you'll hear today. I've got, as always, got some great friends here in the audience, and always appreciate, we all do, appreciate and that you take the time to be with us. So, once again, welcome. Have an amazing week. We will not have Commissioners' Court next week on Monday, and so we'll do our best to, to get things going in the right direction. Once again, welcome, and we thank you for being here.
Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Audrey Lopez. Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4AF. At the request of the ITD Department, we are requesting item 4S be pulled. Item 4S is approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Professional Services Agreement between the County of El Paso and Pivot Technology Services Corporation, doing business as computer center upon review and approval from the county attorney's office. Funds are available in General Fund ITD Professional Services General and General Fund ITD Contract Services General for the total amount of $157,602. Contract number 2022-0776. Are there any other items members of the court or public would like to pull?
Commissioners, Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you, Judge. I would like to pull G and H.
G and H? Move to approve with those exceptions?
Second?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five resolutions. 5A, approve and adopt a resolution declaring October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Stout?
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I have the honor of, of reading this resolution. I'm very pleased to be able to recognize the folks who do such important work in our community. We have enough to deal with outside of our families, and it's very tragic when people don't have a safe home to come, to come home to. The organizations and individuals within them who help provide a safe place for women are, are so busy doing their work that they rarely get an opportunity to reflect, and I hope that by this presentation today, and knowing that the county is behind you, that you're able to take a moment and know how much you are appreciated. So, thank you very much for everything you do. I'll go ahead and read the resolution, and then I also want to thank Commissioner Olgin and her staff, because we worked on this resolution together. I'll read it, and then we can hear from Commissioner Olgin, and, as well as those who, who are here from the Central, the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence. "So whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control, and whereas domestic violence crosses boundaries of age, race, social class, culture, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, and immigration status, so people who identify as members of oppressed or marginalized communities experience greater rates of domestic violence. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas Familias Trunfadoras serves more than 5,000 survivors of domestic violence, primarily women and children who live in the underserved colonias, and who face poor educational attainment levels, are financially challenged and often lack professional and academic role models. And whereas in 2022, the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence celebrated 45 years of being at the forefront of advocating for safety and justice through intervention, education, and community collaboration in the tri-county areas of El Paso, Hudson, and Culberson Counties. And whereas in 2022, the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence received 4,342 calls on the crisis hotline, of which 2,197 were directly related to domestic violence, provided shelter to a total of 826 residents, advocated for an additional 2,272 victims at the Family Resource Center, and provided over 4,600 hours of individual therapy. And whereas this year's campaign, Be Kind, Rewind to a Healthy Start, highlights the importance of changing this learned behavior, only then will we break the cycle of abuse. And now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs, recognize October 2022 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities and programs to work toward improving victim's safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole. Signed this third day of October 2022, the Honorable County Commissioners' Court."
Second?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so I believe we have folks from CASFV, as well as Familias Trunfadoras, if you'd like to come up and, and address us at the podium?
Good morning.
All right, we have the director. All right.
I was incognito with this mask, you know, trying to hide out from you all.
Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. It's our pleasure to be with you this morning, and quite an honor to have you recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Today's a day of unity. It's actually recognized as the first Monday of October, and quite fitting for the idea of kind of like the proclamation, trying to unify those in the community to work towards anti-domestic violence in its all, in all its forms. The Center, as you know, and as Commissioner Stout has mentioned, has been around for 45 years. I've had the pleasure and honor of working at the Center for about 19 years now, where we directly work with individuals, not only with providing them shelter, our non-residential services, a transitional living center, but really being your comprehensive domestic violence program and rape crisis center for our community. It's something that I think our staff does with all their heart. It is a labor of love. It is extremely challenging, and extremely challenging for a lot of the survivors in our community. And so it really, I coin this all the time, but it really does take a village. While we might be the experts in domestic violence and sexual assault, we really look to our community members to be supportive partners as we move forward to, to end the cycle. And so fittingly, we have our campaign of Be Kind, Rewind to a Healthier Start, and trying to just start the conversations of going back to where we know that relationships can be healthy, and knowing what those are, and how do we put those into practice, and how do we hold each other accountable? And so accountable in all phases, right? Accountable with our family, friends, also, you know, as through our community with law enforcement and judicial services. It's important that every one of us holds an important key to that process, and that we're held accountable to ensure that perpetrators are held accountable for their actions as they move through. So with that, we do have some fabulous community partners through our, our, through our wonderful El Paso community, one of which is with me this morning, is the county's attorney's office, Mr. Aaron Setliff, that would also like to say a few words.
Okay, so let's switch around. Thank you. So... Yeah, right here. So yes, I'm Aaron Setliff. I'm an Assistant County Attorney. I'm the trial team chief for the county attorneys, for the Protective Order Unit here at the county attorney's office. I work for Ms. Bernal, who is an amazing leader. I wanted to just briefly thank all of you for your commitment to addressing family violence, including the new attorney that you gave our office to help address that. It's, it's, it's worth noting that the unit that I lead handled 1,229 protective order applications in 2021, and so far this year, we've handled 1,525 applications. So there's too much work, unfortunately, but we're, we're proud to be able to partner with the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence and Sandra during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I want to tell you about some cool stuff that we're doing. So it's Be Kind, Rewind. Maybe we're old enough to remember Be Kind, like that whole Blockbuster thing, right? So that's the, that's the reference. But we're gonna have an Alamo movie night with fried green tomatoes, and may I approach y'all? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So y'all are all invited.
Thank you.
There's a QR code right here for you to be able to buy the tickets. The tickets benefit the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence, and if you pay a little extra, five bucks extra, you can sponsor one of the kids staying at the shelter for another movie night later on. So super exciting. That's October 12th. This October 7th, Sandra and I... This October 7th, Sandra and I are going to talk on Facebook Live. We're like new kids like that, right? We do Facebook Live stuff. And then we've also worked with the county attorney's office to offer a variety of volunteer activities to our employees, but y'all are welcome, to go over to the shelter and do things like game night at the shelter or helping with homework. I'm going to help with homework, but it probably won't be that much help. And then do like yard work or volunteering all week, all month long. So we're very excited to be able to do that. And then on October 20th, we're going to be looking to y'all. All you got to do is just put on the same purple tie you have or the same purple jacket and maybe get some purple here. We'll take, we'll go around the courthouse and we're going to take pictures, take a couple of videos just in support of Purple Thursday, which is October 20th. And then on October 27th, it's trunk or treat. And I don't want to steal their thunder, but it's a really cool thing where you can dress up your cars and stuff like that and hand out candy to the kids. The kids in shelter and otherwise also love dressing up for Halloween, so we're doing a donation drive. If you have any extra Halloween costumes for little kids, all the way to kind of big kids, we're doing that. So lots of activities during Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We're pals and we're going to stay pals. We really want to address the issue together and we're, we're very excited about it.
Well, thank you.
And I think just to, to tie in kind of a little bit what Aaron said, so we brought him for the enthusiasm, as you can tell. And so going back to like why this is so important, so unfortunately, I would like to tell you that, you know, numbers have dropped throughout our community or that we're on that uphill, you know, battle of, of making sure to come back and the numbers have reduced. Unfortunately, though, what I can tell you is that this past year compared to last year, for our hotline calls, there was a 59% increase. I can also tell you unfortunately that this past year, there has been a 26% increase in individuals accessing shelter. Most people would see that as a negative. I like to see it as a positive because I feel like we're doing our job and getting the word out and having people know where to come and access services. So these type of presentations are really important to me and you all knowing the numbers because I feel like you become my extenders, right? So you don't have to remember everything, you don't have to remember everything we do. All I need you to do is remember that one, we exist, two, that there's a crisis hope line, and that you can call us at any time. And that hope line is at 593-7300. There's always someone there that can answer the call, direct an individual, and get them to services that they need because oftentimes there are lifesaving services that these individuals are seeking.
And I'm so glad because I was going to ask you, we have new variables and new situations and the mental health component of the subtlety that we're seeing, sometimes not so subtle, but there is a subtle change. And so I was going to ask you for the sake of the public to, to let them know that things have changed and that we have bigger challenges and so obviously we need more support and thank, we're so glad, part of the legal department, this, this partnership is extremely well done. And of course, you did mention Mrs. Bernal and her support of all of this and the Commissioners is what we do. So I do want to thank you for adding that component about the increase in that because I think we need to be very realistic. So Commissioner Ogilvy?
Thank you, Judge. I just wanted to thank you all for all of the incredible work that you do. It's truly an honor to be able to recognize organizations like the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence and also Familias Triunfadoras for all of the work that they do in San Elizario and the surrounding areas where we know that it's historically even more difficult for victims to reach out for help and to have access to services. And all of the organizations in El Paso, we're blessed that we have so many organizations that provide services to victims. So I just wanted to thank you all, of course, our county attorney's office for everything that you do and for the attention that, that you continue to bring to this very, very important issue. So thank you all for everything.
Commissioner Stout, do you want to?
Just want to echo the thanks that Commissioner Ogilvy gave. You know, thank, thank you for, for all the work that you do. I, I know firsthand the great work that you all do. I've been a, a, one of those people that has received services from your organization and I know how much it helps. So thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Yeah, we want to, yeah, we want to take some pictures with the...
We need some pictures, yeah.
Resolution.
Item 5B, approve and adopt a resolution proclaiming October 2nd through 8th, 2022 as National 4H Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Judge. So today we have with us our county extension agent, Felicia Martinez, who is part with the, of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. And of course with Jade, who is one of our 4H students. So as I read the resolution, I'm going to invite them to come up to the podium so that we can hear from them afterwards. Whereas the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service has been providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State for 115 years. And whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of society. And whereas its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to 19 hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby designate the week of October 3rd through the 7th, 2022, as 4H Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Second.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Felicia?
Thank you, everyone, for being here. So like she said, 4H is a club for kids and teens ages eight to 18, 19, depending on high school. And we are located in every county in Texas, well, 254 of them. We have 43 different projects that kids can participate, everything from livestock to robotics to fashion and interior design. We can compete in contests to test our knowledge, attend camps, do community service, and get scholarships. So today I brought my own daughter, Jade Ornellas, and she participates in the horse project. And she used to participate in the goat project, but she doesn't anymore. But horse stuff is kind of her lane. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, thank you, Felicia. Thank you for that. Maybe we can hear from Jade a little bit about the horse project. Can you tell us a little bit about what you do?
For the horse project, it's mainly being in like different patterns, which is like events. And in my experience, I have been to district and to state, oh, as qualified for state.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Well, thank you for being with us today. If you'll give us a second to come down, we'll take, we'd love to take some pictures
Item 5C, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the month of October 2022 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in El Paso County, Texas. I will go ahead and read in this resolution on behalf of Commissioner Robinson. Whereas 1 in 700 babies born in the United States is born with Down Syndrome. And whereas El Paso County has the highest birth rate of Down Syndrome in the state of Texas. And whereas people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of the community. And whereas the Down Syndrome Coalition for El Paso invites everyone to join us on September, I'm sorry, on Saturday, October 15th, at the 2022 Buddy Walk to celebrate, promote acceptance and inclusion, and raise funds for the Down Syndrome Coalition for El Paso, EPCC scholarships for students with disabilities, and the National Down Syndrome Society. And whereas the Down Syndrome Coalition for El Paso Buddy Walk will take place on the EPCC Vaya Verde campus. Participants and donors can take part by registering at epbuddywalk.org. The Buddy Walk will bring together individuals, families, and agencies to raise awareness. And now therefore be it resolved, the month of October 2022 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Would you like to make the motion, Judge?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Well, I thought I did.
All second. You move all second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
And Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. I'm Jim Heine with the Down Syndrome Coalition for El Paso Buddy Walk Committee and also with El Paso Community College. This has been a 13-year partnership between the Down Syndrome Coalition and El Paso Community College for October being Down Syndrome Awareness Month and holding the Buddy Walk at our beautiful Vaya Verde campus. We invite everyone to please come and join us. The money's raised, as was mentioned, goes to EPCC Buddy Walk Scholarship for students with disabilities and also the many projects that the Down Syndrome Coalition for El Paso has. The one major one is our wonderful preschool called Every Little Blessing on the West Side, which gets young people ready to go into the public school setting. And it is a great project and we would love everyone to come out and join us. And there'll be other nonprofit vendors there also giving information and a beautiful walk. It's supposed to only be 75 degrees that day, so come out and join us. And we thank you very much for making Down Syndrome Awareness Month October. Thank you.
Jim, I want to thank you because El Paso Community College is just exceptional in so many things and, you know, offering their campus. And I've been there at the Buddy Walk and if you really want to understand and really feel good about the children, the adults that have to go through this situation, that's the place to go for awareness. It is just an amazing activity. I, I know I've been very supportive, also Judge Moody, who has really been involved in, in anything having to do with this, with the awareness of Down Syndrome. So Jim, I want to, whoever you can convey that to Community College, we really thank you, and not only for this, but so many other things that start at Community College that happened because of the college. So thank you for that and thank you for, for your work as well.
Thank you. El Paso Community College is very, very proud of our work with diversity and inclusion and it's one of our trademarks of the college and we thank you very much.
It is. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Item 5D, postpone September 26, 2022. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Judge William E. Moody for his service and dedication to the El Paso County, Texas community. We'd like to go ahead and ask for this to be deleted and we'll bring back.
Yes, we'll delete. We're still trying to schedule, trying to find the right time. I'm very anxious because of the recognition for such an amazing judge, but we'll delete this item and we'll bring it back.
Okay. You make the motion to delete?
Yes, a motion to delete.
Second.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 5E, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Arian Eli Hernandez for his contributions to the El Paso County, Texas community through Operation Hope.
Thank you. Could I have Arian Angel, his family? Mrs. Limon also as well. Oh, he stepped out? Okay.
He said he had one more.
He's such a great gentleman, does so much for the community. If, if we can wait for a little while, I don't mind.
No problem.
I don't want to embarrass him, but he...
That he had passed D, so that's...
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, I'll, I'll start reading now because I'm sure he's, he's seen that. But this one's very special and I'll let you know in a little while because of the, the shift that we have to make. You know, it's really important that, that young individuals get recognized. We had a huge volunteer base that because of the pandemic, we've lost a lot of individuals that are not able to participate and are very cautious and we want them to be cautious. But so we're now looking at the younger generation to step up and I think this is a great example of that. So one, two, three, four, I'm trying to...
He made it.
All right, Judge, you can start.
I was saying that you do so much for the community, it would be really worthwhile waiting for you, Angel. So thank you. So, I have the honor and pleasure of reading in the resolution. Of course, Arian Eli Hernandez is a native of El Paso, Texas, and has served as a volunteer of Operation Helping Other People Endure, H O P E, Hope, for 10 years as a volunteer League of Superheroes. On February 17, 2016, Arian was recognized as an outstanding citizen by former city representative that we have here in our presence, Lily Limon, and the city of El Paso as Operation Hope youngest volunteer. And of course, on June 28, 2016, Arian Eli in Operation Hope, League of Superheroes, received recognition from the city of El Paso for their commitment and volunteer service to the community. Arian has participated in throwing the first pitch at the El Paso Chihuahua's Easter Parade, Holiday of Lights Parade, ribbon-cutting events throughout the city, and serving Thanksgiving meals at the convention center for the homeless population. And of course, Arian Eli Hernandez has been an outstanding citizen of El Paso County, delivering toys, food, clothing, and cheer to children living in underserved communities, shelters, and hospitals, along with the El Paso County Sheriff's Department. During the holidays, Arian has participated in the distribution of holiday food baskets to thousands of families during the pandemic and helped deliver food and basic supplies to veterans, elderly residents, and families affected during the pandemic during the 2021 year. And of course, Arian Eli Hernandez has served as an ambassador for performing acts of kindness throughout the county of El Paso. Arian has helped distribute thousands of school supplies and shoes to children during the annual Operation Hope's Back to School events, along with the El Paso County Sheriff's Department, for the past 10 years, as well as El Paso County's National Night Out events. Now therefore be resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court recognizes Arian Eli Hernandez for his contributions and dedication to serving the El Paso community. Signed this third day of October 2022.
Second?
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Isn't that just amazing? My goodness. I'd like to hear. Arian, you want to talk to us?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
I just want to thank my mom and dad and grandpa for supporting all this during all my life for doing this. But I just want to thank them because they've been doing this since before I was even born, before my mom was actually. So, thanking my mom over here, and my dad, and everyone here is an honor. So, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. I was telling him that it's, that there's a sign there that he cannot look better than the Commissioners, and he just outdid all of us. So, he looks good, very intelligent. But we want to thank you because you're an example to other children that might think that, you know, I need to be 20 or 30, or, you know, one day I'm going to help others. And it has to start at that very young age, and so I think you're going to be a perfect example for individuals who are sort of waiting to see maybe when the right time comes and you went for it. And of course, beautiful parents that you have. Angel, thank you for amazing. When you talk about that the fruit doesn't fall far from the tree, that's a perfect example of that because he is you in so many other ways and blessings that he gives to our community, so.
He wears pants.
Pardon me?
He wears pants.
But Lily, you want to go ahead and comment? Because I know you've honored him and.
I would love to. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. So, this young man is a treasure for our community. When he was about five or six years old, I saw him pushing carts with food, delivering toys, delivering Easter baskets, just everything that needed to be done. And I was very thankful to have been invited by Patsy and Angel, and that's where I got to meet them. And got to meet his mom and his dad, and it is just a family that is filled with love and filled with a sense of giving back to our community. I can only imagine what he's going to do in his later life. But certainly, on behalf of all the people that he has touched, I say thank you.
Well, thank you, Representative Limon. From the Sheriffs, you want to tell us a little bit about?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
So, as you can see, I'm a police officer. So, you know, I see a lot of stuff that people shouldn't see. But my job here is, of course, to protect my family, protect El Paso and the citizens. But mostly, I want to make this world a little bit better for my son when he grows up, and he's doing his part as far as that goes. And I just want to tell him that I am very proud of you. End it. Give me a second. There we go. Okay. And that I'm just honored to be his father. I am honored to be your father. I know there's times that you'll drive me crazy. You still haven't hit those teenage years that I'm kind of almost like, ugh! But, you know, I know that you're going to be somebody special in this community or in the world. I know that you're going to make your name known, no matter what you do. I know you have big dreams. You know, you want to be a wrestler, you want to be an NBA star, you want to join the NFL. You have big dreams, and what I say is, follow them. If you set your mind to anything, it's 100% possible. And I know you can. And I know you're just a lot like your mom, so I know that you're going to shoot for everything that you can. But one thing I wanted to say, in the words of Tim McGraw. And it's a. It's a song that I've always liked, but just because of the lyrics themselves. And real simple. Go to church because your mama says to, The Rock. Visit grandpa every chance that you can. It won't be wasted time. Always stay humble and kind. Hold the door. Say please, say thank you. Don't steal, don't cheat, and don't lie. I know you've got mountains to climb, but always stay humble and kind. When the dreams you're dreaming come to you, when the work you put in is realized, let yourself feel the pride, but always stay humble and kind. Thank you.
Mom, do you want to, I don't want to leave mom out because.
Oh, we're never left out. You know, I'm just like, take after my father. Thank you all so much for always supporting Operation Hope. You know, it's a family-based organization. We do our best to serve our community, and without these amazing people behind us, you know, following through and serving with us, we wouldn't be able to do this. So, we appreciate your support because it takes teamwork to do what we do. Yes, everybody knows Angel. He's the beautiful face and shorts and the beautiful legs of Operation Hope. But thank you all so much because it does take teamwork, and you guys supporting us and seeing our vision and helping us bring my son into this makes a big difference. And we want to continue to serve our community, just like you all, by setting the example.
He has, Angel, I've always said, you have the perfect name, right? Angel. Because when you get a call from him, one of the things is he'll ask for help, but he's asking after he's done so much for you. But when he calls me and he says, "Hermano," I go, uh-oh.
You know what that means.
What does "hermano" mean on the tone? So, no, thank you all. I don't know if anybody wants to say anything, but you're welcome to.
A wonderful pastor.
Come on, Pastor.
I was trying to cry like his dad, but I'm emotional. I get a chance to serve with these amazing people, I mean, day in and day out. And to see Eli, I've watched him grow up. But one of the most impressive things about him, he loves going to church, which is the heart of God, and which is, and that what he exhibits out in the community is what is already laid in his foundation, and that's having Jesus in his heart. And I'm so glad he make, he get his parents up and grandparents up to make sure that he gets to the house of the Lord so he can learn also what serving looks like from just a spiritual place and now do it physically and to be recognized by just this amazing city and the Commissioners and the Judge. I mean, it's an example. So, keep up the great work. God bless.
Pastor, thank you so much. But now you know why he's so incredible, the family around him and pastors, his friends, everyone else, Lily. They all come together and help him be who he is. So, Arian, God bless you and keep going, okay? Keep making us proud. Thank you. Thank you. Angel?
Sir, I just want to say thank you, Judge and Commissioners and Mrs. Liana. Thank you so much for always being with us, and some of you have participated in their giveaways and helped us bring joy to our less fortunate brothers and sisters. And being from Bowie High School myself, you know, I saw a lot of my friends going through hard times with their moms and their dads and stuff. But yet their parents were doing their best, as mine were. But one day I said, if I could ever give back, I'll do that with pride, and I've been doing that. And I thank God for my wife that backs me up and my daughter with the visions that I have sometimes. And they say I might be a little crazy, but we put it together, and here we are. So, just to give you a fast reminder, Pastor Eric and I and The Rock, we're going to be collecting items for our brothers and sisters up in Florida during this week, and Southwest Airlines is going to be helping us deliver it to Tampa Bay.
There's no doubt. Thank you. Thank you, Angel. Thank you.
Item 5F, a proven adopter resolution recognizing September 15 through October 15, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month for the contributions and influence of the Hispanic Americans throughout the United States.
Thank you. Also, what a privilege and honor for me to be able to do this, but can we have all my friends come up as I read the resolution? Hi, Desiree. Thank you. So, of course, the El Paso Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, an advocate for minority and women-owned small businesses, proudly honors its members and minority women-owned businesses across El Paso Dune Hispanic Heritage Month and National Women's Small Business Month. And of course, from September 15 to October 15, we honor and observe Hispanic Heritage Month throughout the month of October. We honor National Women's Small Business Month. Where Hispanic Heritage Month calls for a moment to honor all the contributions that Hispanic-owned businesses have made and the impact they have on the business community. The Hispanic culture has never been forgotten along the way, shaping some of our most successful entrepreneurs. The El Paso Hispanic Chamber would like to honor our minority-owned businesses that are the core of El Paso's business community. Their tireless contributions to El Paso, our national economy, our stable local economy, even throughout COVID, has continued to make El Paso a business-friendly city that encourages Hispanic business owners to embrace their heritage and use it to make El Paso a unique border business community. Whereas 4.65 million small Hispanic-owned businesses contribute to our national economy each year, and these minority-owned businesses increase on an annual basis of 2%. They have increased 40% since 2012. Hispanic-owned businesses currently contribute $700 billion to our national economy and are the fastest-growing minority group in the business community. Throughout the United States, 14% of all businesses are Hispanic-owned, proving and reaffirming that Hispanic-owned businesses are the fastest-growing and are a crucial part of the lifeblood of El Paso and the United States. Whereas National Women's Small Business Month celebrates women who have built their businesses from the ground up and withstood all challenges that have faced in the current economy. Many of El Paso businesses have kept our local economy afloat throughout COVID and have continued to do so as we rebuild the economy are woman-owned. The United States Small Business Association, the El Paso Hispanic Chamber, have been key players in promoting and assisting women entrepreneurs who are vital to our economy. And whereas nearly 42% of all small businesses across the nation are women-owned and generate $1.9 trillion to the economy, the growth of women in business not only shows their determination, grit, but also calls attention to how much our local and national economy depend on the success of women and their success on tools necessary to build their businesses. 22 years ago, the El Paso Hispanic Chamber was proud to establish the only women's business border center in our area, a center to assist women in beginning growing their business. The El Paso Hispanic Chamber has proudly operated the Women's Business Border Center for 22 years this October. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court stand with the El Paso Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in congratulating the El Paso's Hispanic-owned businesses and El Paso's women in business for all their contributions they made to our local and national culture, economic growth, and stability. They are a critical part that what makes El Paso, El Paso, strong. Signed this third day of October 2022.
Second?
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You have the floor, Desiree.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, it's always a pleasure to be able to be here with you. I am Desiree Monsonadis. I am the public policy advocate for the Hispanic Chamber. Unfortunately, Cindy could not attend today, although you know she would do anything to attend.
Absolutely.
She has a small business meeting in Arizona. But I do want to go ahead and introduce Janet Aguilar. She is on our board.
Hi, Janet.
And we have some of our staffers, as well as some of our women in business that stand behind me. Small businesses are the lifeblood of not only the local economy, but the national economy as well. The El Paso Hispanic Chamber of Commerce has trained and counseled over 149,000 clients throughout their time. Over $1 million have been given in finance projects. $3 million have been to procurement and bid matches. 36,000 startup businesses have been started with funds and help from the El Paso Hispanic Chamber. 38,000 businesses were able to fund and expand, even through COVID. The jobs created within our area have been near 90,000. The women in business that have been helped, nearly 30,000, and veterans and disabled, nearly 2,100. Our overall economic impact is nearly $4 billion to the El Paso area. I stand in honor of National Women's Small Business Month and Hispanic Heritage Month to say that we are grateful for all that the county does. We understand that you guys are some of our most critical partners when it comes to making sure that these small businesses are able to survive throughout COVID and any other time. So, thank you so much for all you do for us, and we are happy to pair up with you at any given time. I'm going to go ahead and introduce some of our staffers, as well as some of our small business members that are here with us today.
Excellent.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
My name is Kelsey Tonches. I'm a business development specialist. I work at the El Paso Hispanic Chamber with the Women's Business Border Center, and we do help women, veterans, military, anyone who wants to open their own business.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maria Mireles, and I work for the MBDA Business Center, and we help businesses three years and older just continue, stay open, connect them to the correct resources.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I am Lena Minas. I work under the MBDA. I am the procurement and business development specialist handling the infrastructure grants we'll be receiving. we'll be receiving. So any information we can assist companies that would benefit from that, that's what I'll be working on.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Marissa Jameson. I'm the Project Coordinator of the SBA Grant at the El Paso Hispanic Chamber.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Curry with Shelby Distributions. We're one of the service-disabled veteran women-owned small businesses in El Paso. And we've partnered with the Hispanic Chamber for a number of years and seeking any numerous services that they offer, from counseling to training. And we just, we continue to partner with the Hispanic Chamber and just to give back and find ways where we can help other small businesses and other woman-owned businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Janet Aguilar?
On behalf of the Board of Directors, I want to thank you for acknowledging. What do you think of the team? Great stuff.
It's an amazing team. It's an amazing team. Yeah, the partnership with Hispanic Chamber has always been so strong. And of course, you know, Cindy being able to understand it probably better than anybody else, their national recognition that they have received is beyond, I think, any chamber, any Hispanic chamber, especially in the country. So your recognitions of what you do and the small businesses. And I love the fact that, you know, we know that businesses struggle to open and you take care of that. And then you've got at the third year, when it becomes a little crucial, and I know that very well, that you're helping them through the process and sort of walking them through until you feel comfortable that they pass that challenge of so many businesses that close just because they don't have the resources. They have the talent, the abilities, but sometimes they don't have the resources like the Hispanic Chamber to really give them that additional push. So we thank you for that. And Desiree, you want to? Oh, I thought you were going to say something else, but if not.
Just kidding. Well, as I said, we are just happy to pair up with the county. We know how integral you guys were in keeping small business afloat during that very difficult pandemic and even now helping businesses get back on their feet. Our staff is 80% female, so these wonderful, wonderful ladies understand the importance of helping women in business as well as minorities. And we're just happy to be here. Thank you so much for the recognition.
Yeah, and I hope, thank you for mentioning veterans. As you know, we'll be unveiling November the first as the veteran capital of the U.S. And we're very proud. We're ready to entitle and get entitled. And it's going to be a great thing for veterans. So thank you for mentioning them. They always seem to have a little additional challenges because of things that happen and, you know, through their lives. And thank you for being there for them as well. This is one of the reasons that we feel proud that we are the, you know, veterans' capital of the U.S. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is public comment. We do not have any speakers signed up for a regular public comment. We will take no action for item six. Item 7A, Presentation. Receive a presentation and discuss the month's report from the Council of Judges.
Welcome, Judge.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners?
Michael.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity again to come before you to give us an update on our activity. Mr. Cucaro will give you a big bulk of informative data and accomplishments we've had since our last report. I'm very honored to be here before you again. The important thing for me has been, over the last couple of months, is working with the county on the budget process. Over probably eight months ago, when the budget cycle started through the county budget office, we engaged in fact-finding and efforts to ensure that the county received information in a timely way. It was a little bumpy, only to understand that the county needed some further analysis from the county to make sure that the budget requests we were making were accountable to the resources that the county provides to the judiciary. So one of the things I wanted to report to you is that we've added a layer of our process to ensure that we're compliant with the county's interests in making sure that we have all the data, all the analysis, and all the assurances to you, all of you, that the requests that we make are supported by actual need. The way the process has always worked is that the Council of Judges and county court administration assist the courts when they make individual budget requests, significant budget requests such as new positions or large capital project funds. We do the data collection. We work with HR. We work with the county budget. And we make the submission funnel through the county, I'm sorry, through the Council of Judges. We've added another layer now where the Executive Committee of the Council of Judges does a final vetting of the requests and gives a recommendation to the county and Commissioners Court on whether it's appropriate. This last cycle, we considered three requests. One of them was modified to meet the actual, what we could support and what we believed was appropriate at this time. All three, we believe, were needed. But most importantly, it did underscore our interest in making sure that we worked with the county and provided the information that you needed. And I think it'll solve any future bumps that we have in the process, from the judicial branch to the legislative and executive branches of county government. And so with that, I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Cucaro, who will give you some additional information about the judiciary.
Just a quick comment, Judge. One of the things that's been very helpful, before, they would come to us with a lot of different judges. And we're very thankful that we're able to ask them to please, you know, bring it up to the Council of Judges so that we feel comfortable that you two have vetted that situation. So I know, I think last week we delayed it a little bit because I really wanted the Council of Judges to feel that they too were part of it. And so this is a great, huge step for us to be able to count on, on the Council of Judges helping us with some of the things that we might not understand or we might take for granted. And you can give us that feedback on that. So I really thank you since you've been here, Judge.
Well, Judge, I appreciate you commenting on that. By way of history, you're right. I think there used to be a practice where the individual elected judges and elected officials, it wasn't true just to the judges, but any elected official of the county would routinely go through the regular process, budgeting process, but engage the Commissioners Court in dialogue about why it was needed, why it was so important, and can I get your support and those things. And while it gives us some satisfaction that the members of Commissioners Court have all the questions answered before we get to the open meeting and the budget is approved, it did create some kind of convoluted methods in the way we did things. So over the years, the Council of Judges did engage in standing behind the requests that were made. However, through the years, as we became comfortable with each other and with really trusting each other, that last step, we kind of let it go. The county didn't really ask, and we just moved forward with our request. I think the trust level increased where you knew we did our due diligence before we submitted the requests. And so we are definitely trying to stay away from that idea of going and having extra meetings with each of you to lobby our requests. We stand on our requests because we've gone through, not only through the vetting with the county departments, the appropriate county departments, but internally, we vetted our need, our data, our processes. One, for example, you know, was a very large request. It wasn't for lack of need. We most definitely need the added resources, but we felt that we needed some additional work to do with the county departments, with ITD support, ITD analysis, with Mr. Bishop's office that could assist us in our processes. More can be done before we're asking for large sums of money. And I think not only do you expect it, but our constituents expect it.
Absolutely.
As you, we have our own constituents, with the members of the Bar Association, with our litigants, and with the public. Who knows that we use public funds to operate. So thank you for that comment, Judge, and we stand ready for any further advice, guidance, and collaboration on our budget.
No, we thank you for all your effort. Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. Good morning. Judge, Commissioners, Norma sitting in for Betsy Keller. Wanted to bring up a few items that we've been very busy with. And first, I'd like to kick it off with, I mentioned it on Friday, the Council of Judges hosted Williamson County, a magistrate judge and members of their court administration to talk about a number of issues that, and they wanted to see some things like our pre-trial management, how our magistrate process works, and our referral docket. This visit led to a very effective and helpful sharing between our two counties, and we were pleased to host them. But I thought I'd bring up our referral docket to you today. The referral docket, or that's what we call it, is an ARPA and state-funded program whereby we've coupled ARPA funds to provide staff and resources, and then the state provides the visiting judges. And the purpose is to free up our elected judges so that they can work on more complex cases and ultimately drive more dispositions and hopefully advance more trials through the process. What you see above on the screen is the numbers for the past four months from our trial courts. And we feel like it started a little slow as judges become accustomed to it, but those numbers we expect to grow. But the referral docket and staff have still been busy. They've been assisting in the processing of a large number of motions that were flowing through our jail magistrate court. Nearly 1,000 in, I think, the last six weeks. Having the staff and the resources of the referral docket really helped our courts process the sharp increase in motions. We did it efficiently and provided more timely access to justice and resolution of these motions. Again, overall, we are seeing more referrals by the trial courts, and we're hoping to see more particularly from the family and the civil courts as this docket continues. It is a time-limited docket that was implemented as a response to the pandemic, and we'll continue to report those figures to you. In preparation for an update to the judiciary's 2019 strategic plan that we have scheduled for January, staff has begun reviewing our progress and current state. The Council of Judges, both judges and staff, are engaged now in over 25 court improvement programs and projects spanning technology, data analytics, professional services, and process improvement. This really is an overwhelming number of projects for such a small staff, so change is often slower incremental, but progress is being made. Council of Judges is also collaborating with county administration departments to remove communication and process roadblocks to speed up project implementation. And we appreciate the cooperation and interest we've received from Betsy Keller, Joel Bishop, Melissa Carrillo, the Human Resources Department, and the Budget Office. We look forward to working with our other departments as well and believe that these collaborations will benefit the entire county, not just the judicial branch. The Council of Judges also has two other efforts underway to encourage collaboration, specifically, sorry, between the county departments engaged in criminal justice. These are going very well, and they're actually dealing with some intractable problems that we've had in the past. If you've heard of PID Merge in the past, I think this has been an ongoing problem for 10 years, and we're really excited that we might be able to finally put this to bed. And it affects the sheriff's office, the DA's office, the courts, and the clerks' offices. So we're hoping for some remarkable progress through these courts and justice collaborations. And finally, on a high note, I would like to remark on the progress of our council's goal to become a national model for other courts. Judges and staff continue. Judges and staff continue to regularly teach at professional conferences. We're compiling a list of all the professional committees, associations, and commissions where our judges and staff serve. And above on the screen, you'll see some examples of things that we're doing. As you can see, we are achieving national recognition for our analytics and our stewardship of the system during the pandemic, and international recognition for our leadership and treatment courts and court organization. We're very proud of our judges and staff who are bringing a claim to El Paso County and look forward to continuing to serve as ambassadors to the rest of the country and to the world. If any commissioner would like an individual briefing on the budget review process or other items today, I'd be happy to set an individual appointment. Or if there are any questions now, I will take them before concluding.
Any questions? Commissioner Olgin?
Good morning, Michael. Good morning, Judge Betis. I just had a question, Michael. You said that the referral docket was set to expire, which makes sense considering it has ARPA funding, but when is that expiration date?
14 months from now. So it's an 18-month, we requested funds for 18 months. We're four months into it, so.
Okay. And at that time, do you foresee that the Commissioners Court will need to determine if additional funds are necessary? Or do we think that in those remaining 14 months, we'll have caught up and there won't be a need for the referral docket anymore?
The goal was to actually finish it out in 18 months. And we have to watch the adjustment because we had several efforts underway to kind of fine-tune what we're doing with the active pending caseload after the pandemic. El Paso is recognized in Texas and across the country for being one of the top counties for managing that. And so we've done very well. Can we do better? Can we help courts be, you know, feel like they have the time to be more deliberative, to do those things that make people feel good about our courts? Yes, we're using these resources to do that.
So the goal is to not need it to continue, but at this point, we're just not sure. We just have to keep monitoring it.
Right, correct. So, but yeah, we did not start this with anticipation it would last forever.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, Michael, Judge, thank you so much for being here with us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. And again, for the opportunity to talk about the great things that the judges do. Let me just say that this is such a small part of what the judiciary is doing. There is a very deliberate effort to demystify the upper floors of this building. We are out in the community. We're collaborating with the Community College to vamp up the court reporting program. Several judges, a group of judges are engaged at a statewide level to introduce students to the pathways to the courthouse, the good pathways, that being career choices. Many of our judges are also appointed by both the governor and the state bar to statewide positions of leadership. And so this is such a small example of the great things we're doing. And so we're very grateful to the relationship we're developing and fostering with the county because our strength does come with the support that we get from all of you. So we thank you.
And we thank you for recognizing them and, you know, our treatment courts. I mean, I'm so fascinated that I keep telling everyone, if you want to see the potential of changes in people at the treatment courts, it's just beyond anybody's understanding. The difficulties that they go in and how they come out are just amazing. So just want to thank you for that. And then all the other recognitions, you know, we saw with Judge Alvarez, and we'll be recognizing Judge Moody. And it's always just a pleasure and an honor to have that recognition. So thank you, Judge. Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Thank you.
Item number eight from the regular agenda, postpone September 12, 2022. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the approval of an order authorizing the issuance of El Paso County Hospital District Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation in one or more series, levying a continuing direct annual adven- tax for the payment of such certificates, and resolving other matters incident and related thereto, including the delegation of matters relating to the sale and issuance of the certificates to an authorized district official within certain specified parameters. And just for information, we do have three members of the public signed up to speak on this item.
Okay. Do we have our county clerk today?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Sorry, didn't see you. I will start off by having Mrs. Bionis tell you a little bit about the process and where we are at this time, so you want to go ahead and?
Sorry, I didn't want to overstep my bounds because it was put on by Mr. Sintrao, so I wasn't sure if he was going to make that introduction.
No, we had to recognize it by you telling us where we are with the petition, and then we could hear from you.
Okay.
Thank you for?
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I am the county clerk, and we had the task of counting all the petitions. The fourth petition was received on the 30th of September at the county clerk's office in the afternoon at 1:43 a.m., sorry. The petition was a total of three pages and did not meet the minimum threshold of petition entries. Only one petition received on the 9th of September at 2:41 p.m. included petition entries of at least the minimum threshold of number of signatures required. The signature verification began on the 15th of September, and the county clerk, my office, we elected to verify all signatures in my possession that were submitted for the petition, not just the minimum, but all of them. We confirmed that the petition signatures requirements under the election code were met for each validated signature, whether the petition included validated signatures of at least 5% of the registered voters, or at least the 25,164 validated signatures. That was the minimum. The petition verification team completed the review of all signatures on the 29th of September. And if I can give you the numbers, the requirement was, as I stated, 25,164. We reviewed 36,924 signatures. Accepted of those were 32,311, and rejected were 4,613. The minimum threshold of verified signatures required for the petition to prevent the issuance of a certificate of obligation was met of 25,164. After the verification process was completed, the petition surpassed the minimum threshold by 7,147 signatures. Now, the verification process has concluded. Those petition boxes will be stored in a vault that we have located at our Records Management Division office located at 800 East Overland. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. As you could see, very comprehensive and very proud of our county clerk and what she had to do and her team had to do to be able to get this done accordingly. So we thank you, and please pass on to your team.
And the elections office.
And the elections office as well. So pass on to your members and your team, that very well done. It's a due diligence that was important, and I'm glad that we had you overlooking that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So if you have any questions, I'm here.
No questions at this time? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to have Jacob Sintrao now, if you could.
Judge, Commissioners, so clearly with the valid petition that's been presented, we will respect that process. Want to assure you all that the things that we had asked for in our bond are necessary for us to continue to provide great care for our community, and we will continue that fight. At the same time, you know, this gives me an opportunity to thank all of you for your help. Many of you were at our meetings and were supportive, and we appreciate that. We also want to thank, you know, Congresswoman Veronica Escobar, State Representative Mary Gonzalez, certainly our board, and in particular, Dr. Perez, who, you know, was a great support for us, and the many other individuals that support us, my team that attended 76 public meetings to be able to present our case. And I want to thank the people that attended. You know, it wasn't easy, you know, their own time to go and take time to listen to our presentation, but certainly extend our appreciation to them for that, as well as, you know, the fact that we will, you know, continue to advocate for great care in our community, especially for those that have no voice or no insurance or ability to pay. Nonetheless, we will respect the process and we will follow along with that and leave it to you to decide next steps. We'll go back to our board as well and sort of, you know, discuss what our next steps will be as well in view of the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Sintrao, and I want to thank the board and everybody that participated, and also just everybody. One of the objectives, obviously, was, I think we're in a much better place than if we had not gone through the process, because we, 70-plus meetings that were held, people know more about the situation. I think it was very well done. I want to thank our attorneys, our team, Joanne, and your team, and everyone else trying to work together. And I think this talks about how things should work in democracy, right? Because everybody has an opportunity, and I feel really good that the process took place. And I thank you, Jacob, and your team. And I would like to also have, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Christina talk a little bit about, from a legal perspective, where are we at this point in time? So Christina, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. And so we heard from the county clerk, I think she laid it out very clearly and concisely, but I'll go ahead and just provide where we are in terms of what the court is or is not authorized to do. And so what we heard today is that minimum threshold for signatures has been verified by the county clerk's office. And so what, under the law, what that means is that the county, the county commissioners cannot move forward to issue those certificates of obligations because that 5% of the registered voters in El Paso counties have signed on to those petitions. And so again, that means that this court cannot move forward in the issuance of this bond. It does not mean that you automatically order an election. That is not what that means. It just means that for purposes for today, you don't issue those bonds. And so that's where we are at the process. There are different timelines, if, we're not there yet, if the court decides, of course, in conjunction with, I'm hearing conversations with UMC Board, to move forward with a vote on these bonds, that would come at a later date, and there's certain timelines that have to be met and other criteria. But again, for today's purposes, under the law, the court cannot move forward in issuing those bonds.
Thank you. And Jacob, we look forward to you going back to the board and coming back to us. I think the public would like to hear, you know, what you and your team feels are the next steps, and so we really respect the fact that you're willing to go to the board, talk about it, and then you would come back to us, and then we'd get some guidance from our legal team, is what we would like to do at this time. I am proposing that we do not take any action at this time, and I'm looking at my commissioners to see if we're okay with no action. Okay? So if there's no action at this time, and then we're going to hear from our public comments as well.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Leon?
Jacob, I wanted to make sure, again, thank you and your staff. As you mentioned, some of those meetings at the beginning were very, let's say, rough. But at the end, what I got, took back from them, that a lot of the constituents really didn't understand what was being proposed and the ultimate goal of the hospital district. So again, thank you again to that staff of yours who, I think, at the beginning of some of the meetings, it was really a little rough, but towards the end, I could see that the audience really understood what the issues were. So again, thank you, and thank you, staff. Appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon.
Thank you. I think when people find how fiscally sound we operate, and when we look at the things that we were asking for, and how they would benefit the public, I think that went a long way. Nonetheless, the process is that, you know, we have a valid petition, we live in a democratic society, this is a representation of that, and so we'll fully support the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Go ahead.
Our first speaker we have signed up is Ms. Sylvia Carrion. And just as a reminder to speakers, we do have a limit of five minutes. You will be timed.
Welcome, Ms. Carrion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will start to introduce myself to you all, so you know where I stand. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sylvia Carrion, president of the Mission Valley Civic Association, Land Neighborhood Association, and a board member of Project Bravo, is a board member of the Mission Trail Association, who do the tours down the Mission of Socorro. I'm a retired deputy sheriff who served under Leo Samaniego for over 20 years, and patrolled the towns of Torneo, Fabinz, Clith, Socorro, San Elizario, Hueco Tengs, Canotio, and this I did encounter during my years of patrol, I did encounter families who owned much property and were families of means. I also encountered very poor families who did not own their homes and lived on their daily earnings. This scenario is also true for so many families in the Mission Valley planning area. The entire inhabitants in the city and the county of El Paso are made of those who have means and those who do not have means, the haves and the have-nots. The University Medical Center proposed certificates of obligation on the building of a new hospital and other amenities should have been overwhelmingly approved. I attended several of the presentations that the hospital gave to the communities in different parts of the city and encountered those people who wanted the item put to the voters. I totally disagreed with the step as the voters would vote against the measure, not understanding the benefits to the entire community as a whole. The hospital staff gave us a breakdown on how much money most of us would pay next year. I noticed that my part would be about $10, maybe $14 a month. I heard from people who complained that they would pay a lot more. The tax rate is based, placed upon the value of the property, so the more you pay, the more you're worth. I noticed that people who were collecting signatures to place this item on the ballot took the advantage of the community presentations set forth by the hospital staff to acquire their agenda and their signatures. All of these people collecting signatures will rally the people to vote against a new hospital, because they are the ones that have it. During these meetings, I put out examples of how we, as a society, will always complain about higher taxes, but yet reap the rewards of how those taxes are implemented. The city and county put forth entertainment venues for the public, and many are filled with, and many are filled, though, the tickets can run from $75 to $300, and sometimes even more, up to $1,000 a ticket. We spend good money to attend football games, basketball, baseball, soccer events, concerts, circus, plays, music events in the parks, church, wet and wild, western playland, and now that football season has started, you will see everyone sporting their favorite team jersey or cap. These items are sometimes very expensive, not to mention the money that we'll be spending traveling to their, to see their teams in person. People will find money for personal pleasures, nothing wrong with that at all times. There's nothing wrong with, as long as we give our brother a helping hand. Today's gospel was that of Luke 10:25 to 37, "For the people as Jesus." What must we do to inherit eternal life? Jesus said, "What is written?" They said, "You shall love your God with all your heart, with all your being, with all your strength, with all your might, and you must love your neighbor as yourself." It will be apparent, not all of the people will do their Christian duty, because if this item is put to the vote of the people, it will not pass, and the haves will be the have-nots. I understand that this is an issue that, so, well, we have a right to decide. Yes, you do. You do have a right to decide. When I was at the meeting at the Esleida High School, I had a couple of gentlemen approach me and said, "Ms. Carrion, if you want to be so happy to pay more taxes, why don't you pay mine?" That was Mr. Max Grossman. Mr. Grossman, I said, "You just got back from a month trip to Europe, and you're complaining about a few dollars?" There was other people like that, they don't want to pay.
Time.
We need to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Carrion.
Do your Christian duty, please.
Thank you. And also, for your service, Mrs. Carrion, thank you for your long service with us. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Carla Sierra.
Good morning, Carla.
Good morning, sir.
How are you?
How are you all doing?
Real good, thank you.
Good. Good morning, County Commissioners and Judge Samaniego. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Carla Sierra, and I'm the proud director of the Libra Initiative here in the El Paso, Texas area. Libra has been committed to serving the El Paso community since 2016, and our mission and vision have always been to work with anyone to do good and no one to do harm, and act with humility, respect, and integrity. We firmly stand by these principles. Our communities would thrive if we came together on critical issues, put our differences aside, and discuss solutions. It is lofty to assume that we can agree on every topic with every single individual. Our country has experienced much divisiveness over the last few years. It's time to put partisan politics aside and focus on the best interests of our community. Libra has provided tools and resources in El Paso since 2016, where everyone has the opportunity to succeed and live a life of meaning. I would like to address inaccurate statements made about Libra and myself, primarily the out-of-towners reference. I am an El Paso native. My grandparents and my father migrated from Mexico. My father and uncle established a successful clothing manufacturing company just down the road on Texas Street. My grandfather retired from Coronado High School, where he served as a custodian for many years, and my mother retired from the El Paso Police Department after serving our community for over 20 years. After completing my service with the United States Peace Corps, I returned to El Paso in 2014. In May of this year, I was one of five John F. Kennedy Service Award recipients in Washington, DC, which is only awarded every six years. I am the only El Pasoan to receive this great honor. I successfully completed the City of El Paso Neighborhood Leadership Academy and was recently honored with a proclamation by Mayor Leeser and City Council for my continued service to the El Paso community. I also serve as a board member, excuse me, for First Presbyterian Church. I have a personal and professional vested interest in my hometown, and I am far from an outsider. On July 21st, Libra decided to inform El Pasoans about UMC's $400 million certificates of obligation proposal, a proposal that would increase property taxes. We began hosting community events. Phone banks knocked on 19,000 doors between July 21st and September 7th, not an easy task. We had about six weeks to collect 25,000 signatures and overwhelmingly 35,000-plus El Pasoans signed, not only to hold UMC accountable for their lack of transparency, but to send a clear message to our elected officials. El Pasoans are struggling to make ends meet because of inflation and high gas prices. Yet our taxing entities and elected officials continue to overspend and forces to incur debt, some debt without voter approval. Constituents of El Paso are not a blank check. Libra will continue to protect the well- Libra will continue to protect the well-being of the El Paso community. Only a few cities in Texas have attempted to achieve the goal of collecting signatures of 5% of registered voters to put certificates of obligation on the ballot. El Paso is the only city to have collected signatures at this magnitude. Although the signatures are important, it should be noted and not taken lightly that 35,000 El Pasuans from diverse backgrounds, socioeconomic statuses, came together, put their differences aside, and fought the good fight to achieve this goal. This is an important milestone for our community and my hometown. We didn't do this alone. There are several people that helped us during this time, my team, family and friends, volunteers, and community partners. Doravía Nueva and the Valverde Neighborhood Association, Scott Lynch, the Apartment Association, Ray Adalto, the Builders Association, Greater El Paso Association of Realtors, Gentleman's Republic Barber Salon in Mensual, Palet Rodriguez, Abel Rodriguez from Dialogue Podcast, Frank Lada from Royal Lex Studios, Mr. Rick Flores, Advocate for Community and Friends, El Paso News, Councilwoman Claudia Rodriguez, Guadalupe Jiménez, Don Shelton, First Presbyterian Church, Marcia Gastelum, International Copy Machine Center, Sylvia Garcia, El Paso Times, Andrew J. Pocatalk El Paso, Let's Talk Stuff Podcast with George Savala, Rebecca Ramírez, K-Fox, CBS4, Janelle Wessel, Lone Star Investments, Victoria Olivia Duron, El Paso Republican Liberty Caucus, Dead Beach Brewery, Postal Annex on Desert Boulevard, the Saragossa Rotary Club, the Sunrise Rotary Club. We also like to thank the county clerk and her team, as we know this was not an easy task, Alfredo Ariano, Corpus Christi Catholic Church, Miguel Juárez, and of course, all those partners that I missed out. And thank you again so much for your time and allowing us to go through this process.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have signed up is Mr. Abel Rodriguez.
Welcome, Abel. How are you?
Good morning.
You're welcome.
Thanks for having me and allowing me to step on this thing a little bit. My name is Abel Rodriguez. I'm a native El Pasuan, graduate of Cathedral High School, the University of Texas at El Paso. Media, social media, all that wonderful stuff. But the one thing that I do want to say is how wonderful, and you stated, county judge, that democracy is. This was a democratic process. There was something that was not liked, and then you have a way to maybe divert it a little bit, and everybody went through the motions. But I'd like to, first of all, congratulate these young women, most of them, with a project that did something that I have never seen in my lifetime. I don't know about you all, you've been around as long as I have, of gathering over 35,000 signatures on something. That is incredible. I'd like to see, you know, on either side of the, you know, the red or the blue or wherever they fall, have they ever done that? Think about that. That is amazing, and that is, you know, the reason that I'm here, is to tell you that I've, you know, they don't like to, they don't like to hear the word Thomas and General, but that's how far back I go. And, you know, they've done great things. But I'm going to read this off of their website. It says, "Unlike any hospitals in this area, University Medical Center of El Paso is owned by the people of El Paso. UMC is the city's only not-for-profit community hospital, which means UMC's allegiances are to no, to no, to no one other than the people." That's us. Now, the CEOs and all the stuff that goes on and all that, you know, it's what it is. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, somebody said, "We need to get this to a vote." There's already, you know, an example of when we voted for the children's hospital. That went to the voters, and it passed. But CEOs and processing them through and all that, man, it's tough for you guys because you want stuff. You want stuff for the community. You want stuff for your voters of your districts. And I understand. But in this one case, you know, and back and forth that went on politically was interesting. They had their meetings. They compiled the data, all that great stuff. But the bottom line was the ability to, of you guys to be able to do the CEOs. And whatever data that you get that's compiled that convinces you to give the CEOs, that's where you deal. But luckily, this happened. And I just want to, you know, I want to do this symbolically to let you know that honestly, with everything that we pay in taxes, because the American dream is owning your home, owning property. But don't pay your taxes, and that American dream can be taken away from you. That's how, you know, I mean, taxes matter. And when you're already at a ceiling, and you're still going, "No, it's only $8," or whatever it is, I just want to do this symbolically and let you know that at my household, it's empty. While it is empty right now. It might get better later on down the track, don't get me wrong. But right now, a lot of people are tapped out. So that's what I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Abel, no, thank you for being here with us. Thank you.
Judge, we have one more speaker signed up. They are virtual. Ms. Delirious Montanes.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
Ms. Montanes, she's online.
Welcome.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, county commissioners. Can you hear me?
Good morning, yeah. A little light, but maybe a little closer to your mic. Go ahead.
Maybe now? Better?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, so I wanted to speak regarding the UMC that you guys have, the UMC proposition that you have on the agenda. And I agree with everything that the constituents have already stated. It is really hard, as you know, to get signatures from our community. And I think that over 35 signatures on a petition, that should tell something to our commissioners in our county. I don't agree on the certificates of obligation. We did that with the children's hospital, and there is a lot of unknown in the community, and we are still paying for that hospital. So in my opinion, there hasn't been that much transparency on the matter. And last week, we actually met with the veterans at the El Paso Coliseum. And my dad just relocated from Puerto Rico. And he asked me, you know, "Is this a democracy?" And sometimes it feels like it's not a federalized republic. Like, this is our land. This is our people. Government employees and elected officials are administrative personnel for the community. But we should be able to listen to the constituents and decide, you know, what they want. And the only approach that our constituents have is actually going to the voters booth, the ballot booth. And we shouldn't be taking that away from our constituents. The children's hospital went to the ballot. It got approved. Like I say, there's still not a lot of transparency how that money was used. And I just wanted to address this court because we need to listen to our constituents, Judge. And I hope that the commissioners take that in consideration. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for your time. Thank you for being with us. Jessica?
Those are all the speakers signed up for this item.
Okay, well, once again, we thank you all. I really believe the process shows that we have options, and we, you know, we respect everything that everybody did. Everybody's taking the high road, and I appreciate that. Look forward to the board coming back and telling us what their options are at that point in time. So once again, thank you all for all your hard work. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs.
We will take no action for item number eight. Judge, would you like to go ahead and take up the items pulled by Commissioner Oggy?
Yeah, and just to let everybody know, we will be going all the way till 1 o'clock for lunch, and so that everybody can prepare lunch by 1 o'clock, not at 12:00. Okay? And we will take the two items on the, from Commissioner Oggy.
Okay, item 4G from the consent agenda. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Second Amendment with the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, amending the Colonia South Help Center Program grant contract to extend the contract end date from October 11, 2022, to April 22, 2023, and reallocate funds to increase the reconstruction budget line item, contract number 2022-0806.
Commissioner Oggy?
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Irene. I just had a couple of questions about this item. I just wanted to confirm, there isn't any type of penalty for requesting the extension, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then, so it looks like the line items that'll be substituted in the 32,500 from rehabilitation to reconstruction, which is the mobile home replacement. So I can see that there's no difference in the budget. But I am wondering about the decrease in, potential decrease in the number of people assisted. So it looks like for the replacement portion, the decrease is going to be from 12 homes to seven. And then we're also making a change with the rehabilitation portion of the funding from assisting five homes to assisting up to five homes. So it could be less than the five homes. So I'm just wondering if you could just give us a little bit more background on why the change in the number of residents who may potentially be assisted with the funding.
Yes, ma'am. Irene Maranzuela for the record with the Media Services Department. So recently, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs changed their cap guidance on each of these line items. When we originally received this grant four years ago, they had capped it to specific limits on how much we could expend per household. And so they did increase our mobile home replacement, which is a reconstruction line item, Commissioner. They increased it to $100,000 recently. And so, as you know, we already made seven families eligible, and they received mobile homes within that cap. And so prior to that, we were expecting to assist 12 with a reduced cap. With the increase, and due to the increased cost in mobile homes, we were only able to assist the seven that we have already made eligible for this program. And so that's a difference. We're just ratifying that change within the cap guidance from the Texas Department of Housing. It's the same for the rehabilitation line item. We had initially, we had a cap for that as well from $45,000. It went up to $75,000. We had intended to assist five homes with rehabilitation of their home. However, some of those families have since pulled out of the program due to several reasons. A few of them expressed concerns that with a newly rehabilitated home, their taxes and their valuation would increase, and they didn't want to succumb to an increase in tax. And so they rejected the, or rescinded their application, rather, from our program. And right now, we have two that are still remaining to participate in the rehabilitation program, which we are going to try to assist within this six-month extension that we're getting approved today as well.
Okay, so then the caps have already been reached in both programs. I mean, the families that are being assisted are being assisted with that higher figure in both programs, right? The rehabilitation and the reconstruction. So there's no chance that maybe that cap isn't going to be reached, and we would have additional funds available?
Well, with the increased costs in all the materials that we've experienced over the last year or two, we anticipate that with the increase in cap, we're barely going to be able to complete these two for rehabilitation and the ones we've done for mobile homes. Just to give you context for all the members of the court, in 2018, when we had this program four years ago, we were able to purchase one mobile home for $37,000 to replace, and we helped seven families. Today, this last bid, that same mobile home cost us $83,000. So the cost to purchase that and replace for families has more than doubled for our families. And that's why we're able to assist the same amount of people today with more money than we were four years ago when we had a cap and the mobile homes were much, much less expensive back then.
Wow, that's an incredible increase. Those were all my questions, Judge. I'll move to approve the item.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is absent. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And item number 4, 4H. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Fifth Amendment to the services agreement between the County of El Paso, Texas, and Salrico Services, Inc., for congregate and home-delivered meals for the city-county nutrition program for the second of three six-month renewal options with a term effective October 9, 2022, through April 8, 2023. Contract number 2022-0664.
And I just had a couple of questions about this program, Irene. So I noticed that there was a decrease in the plated meals in the centers that were being served. It went from eight to five. So I'm just hoping maybe you can give us some background on why that was. And then also that I noticed Fabens wasn't one of the centers that was listed in the backup. So I'm just wondering why that was as well.
Commissioner, I have Rosalba Hernández on the call as well. She may be able to answer those questions. Rosalba?
Yes, I'm on, and my camera's not coming on. I'm so sorry. But Rosalba Hernández, program manager under Community Services Department. Ma'am, the centers that are no longer being served is because they did not reopen after COVID. They have not reopened, so we are making that amendment to the original contract showing less centers being served.
And are all those centers City of El Paso centers? I think that they were, from my recollection.
Yes, ma'am. There was two from City of El Paso, and one that was a privately-owned apartment complex.
Okay, and then also, Rosalba, I noticed that Fabens wasn't one of the listed centers. Is there, are they going to be getting their meals from somewhere else, or?
No, they will continue to be receiving the same meals. There is no impact change to Fabens.
Okay, I guess I'll, because I'm pulling it up right now because when I saw the list, I didn't see Fabens. So it says, let me see. So I'm looking at the second page, number six.
Yes.
Serve meals in bulk with the exception of the following five centers, which require individual plating, Clint, McCall, Montana Vista, San Elizario, and Socorro. So that's where I didn't see Fabens. And I was just wondering if that was an oversight, if we need to fix that, or is there a reason for that?
No, ma'am. Thank you for bringing that up. Fabens receives their meals not in bulk. They are not pre-plated. They receive the meals, they are served from the hot tray. These centers mentioned here receive their meals in bulk, which is pre-plated.
Okay, so then Fabens, there's no change. They're still going to continue getting the meals.
No change.
They just do it, they receive them a little bit differently than these five, than these five.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, yes, Commissioner.
Thanks, Commissioner Oggy for pulling this item. I also wanted to just ask you all. I know that you participated in a listening session at the Happiness Center that's in Precinct Two a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, there are a number of issues that people brought up with the food service. And I know you all heard a lot of these things. But I wanted to understand if, you know, are those things, are we able to look at those things as a part of this contract? Or is that just something we need to talk to Salrico, the vendor, about changing? I know that, you know, people brought up issues like, you know, they need to be more, I guess, culturally relevant meals, or... Some of them talked about food being cold or meat being hard to cut, things being raw, sometimes things being rotten, not flavorful. How are we working with the vendor to remedy some of these and take care of some of these issues?
Good afternoon again, Rosalba Hernández, program manager under Community Services Department. Commissioner Stout, thank you. I was present at the listening session. I was present at the listening session at the Jesse Moreno Happiness Center, and so was the vendor. So was Salrico. And the primary message we heard was that, yes, our seniors want more of a variety in the menu. There are certain menu items that they do not like, and we are working with Salrico to make some changes to the menu. The menu is a three-month menu cycle, and some of the issues that were brought forth were also that we get repeated meals. So we are working with Salrico on making some adjustments to the existing menu, so that they may also work with the nutritionists that they have on board to help us bring different menu items that will still meet the guidelines of the grant that we receive.
Okay. I appreciate your work, and thank you all for participating in that meeting as well. I think, I wish I could have been there, but I was not able to go. But I know you represented the county very well, and so thank you very much. And we will check back with folks, and hopefully they will be satisfied with some of the changes that you're talking about, Salrico agreeing to make. So I'll move to approve.
And actually, if I could just add really quickly, one of the comments that I heard as well, just to add to some of the concerns that Commissioner Stout had, that sometimes there are a lot of carbs in the meal, which could be detrimental to some of our seniors with diabetes issues. So that was another thing that residents asked us to take a look at. So I'll second.
Commissioner Oggi.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Back to the regular order of the agenda. Item number nine, county administration, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for public health emergency.
Morning. Judge Commissioners, any updates from the court? Judge?
I don't have any at this time.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Leon?
No.
Commissioner Stout?
I have none, thank you.
Commissioner Oggi?
No, Norma, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
We'll take no action for item number nine. Item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the appointment of a third elected official to represent El Paso County on the Horizon City Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One Board of Directors.
As you all may recall, a few months ago, the court approved the participation agreement with Horizon City to be on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors. Part of our negotiations with Horizon City included negotiating a third seat to increase the county's representation. The bylaws require it to be the judge and the commissioner who represents a majority of the TERS area. In this case, it would be Commissioner Oggi. And then, the court also has the authority to appoint a third additional member to represent the county, with the same caveat that it'd be someone who represents the majority of the TERS boundary. So included on the item, as well as in your agenda brief, were some considerations on positions, offices that would be eligible to meet that criteria. And so, given that the first board meeting that the court would be attending, along with their appointee, is scheduled for next Tuesday, we would recommend that the court appoints or come up with a list of maybe at least one, anywhere from one to three individuals that then you could direct staff to reach out to and gauge their interest, so that we have the ability to secure a recommendation. In the event that we're not able to, we'll bring the item back to the court on the 17th, so you all can decide how to proceed at that point.
How would that work? Because we wouldn't be able to select between now and Tuesday, our meeting. You're not saying that we meet that person on that particular meeting, or?
The TERS would like to have the county's full participation. They notified us of this last week, and so we placed this item on your agenda for your discussion today. Some options the court has is to either come up with a shortlist of, say, we generally want to approach these individuals, and then direct staff to work on that. The court might also consider doing that same process, but then ensuring that two members of the court approve of the ultimate individual who's going to be participating. So perhaps, Judge and Commissioners, since you all will be the representatives, the court can come up with some consensus on a list of individuals. We'll reach out to them, and then we'll work with your offices to see if you all are in agreement with that. And then we can just provide a report back to the court about who the individual was that will be serving as the county's third appointment.
Yeah, I guess I was saying, we don't have to vote on that individual prior to the meeting.
No, I think what we could do is come up with a list, and then, I don't know that we would defer to Ms. Sanchez in the county attorney's office to determine if we would need a formal action, or whether you could just give us direction, and then have that individual participate at next Tuesday's meeting, and then bring it back for ratification on the 17th.
Christina, can you comment on whether or not we could have someone without voting for that individual?
You know, I think that's going to also depend probably on the Horizon City TERS rules. So if there's a specific rules that requires that person, but I think in terms of having a representative there, there's nothing, to my knowledge, that would prohibit you from then, today, assigning that person to attend that meeting next week. What you all can't do is submit any names and then voting via email, for example. I mean, obviously, I just wanted to point that out. That would not be appropriate under the Texas Open Meetings Act. So today, what the court should be doing, and what I'm understanding from Mr. Landeros, is to decide which of those options, and then perhaps give him that consensus to then assign that person to attend that meeting next week with the Horizon City TERS.
So the rules stated, has to be an elected official? That's as per like state statute, or that's just what the agreement?
That is what the agreement stated.
Okay. Because, I mean, I figured maybe staff would also be an option, but that's not something that we could have negotiated as well.
We did attempt to negotiate that, in the interest of the court wanting to see more representation. The desire from the TERS board in Horizon City was to ensure that it was elected officials who are ultimately accountable to the public.
I mean, I would prefer, out of the list that we have here, if it has to be an elected official and not staff, county attorney's office, is, I mean, is who I would prefer, because I feel like that is the elected official office within the county that we have more, we work more closely with, I believe, and would also, you know, I think it would best to have our interests at heart.
I agree. That was actually going to be my suggestion, and also just because the county attorney's office has been already so involved with this process, that they have a lot of that background knowledge. The only concern I had is, I don't know if there ever arose some kind of conflict between the county and the City of Horizon, and of course, it would be the county attorney's office. But I don't know if that would have anything to, that would be a reason why they couldn't also serve on the TERS board. I don't know, Christina, if you foresee any type of issue.
I think it's important, because, you know, because we're dealing with them, and then we, let's say we had something that we had to come to our legal department to have a discussion on that, then I think that's where it would be difficult to.
And that's what I wasn't sure about. They were my, the county attorney was my first choice, but I wasn't sure about if.
Well, I mean, it would be also kind of the same scenario, for example, if they are discussing a particular issue. We wouldn't necessarily designate the individual, I'm assuming from the county attorney's office, that would be the same person that would be answering that particular question, right? It's a different individual that would serve on that board. But I mean, if you were to make a comparison, for example, a member of the commissioners' court serves on various boards, whether it's TERS, or EHN, or something else, and there's issues sometimes that come up with regards to maybe specific questions, and we come to us, we answer those questions, or even just a particular policy matter. And it doesn't necessitate that the member of the court recues themselves unless there's a specific legal issue that's there. We would probably have to determine that on a fact-by-fact basis, depending on the particular circumstance. But it automatically doesn't mean that there's a recusal and not able to participate on a particular subject matter. So I don't think it in and of itself is detrimental to having somebody from the county attorney's office serving that role.
And I think if we're leaning in that direction, that we could sort of give direction to our legal department to choose that person who they feel would be.
Well, no, I think it would have to be the county attorney herself.
Have to be the elected official.
That's right, the elected official.
It would have to be the elected official. So it would have to be county attorney, but not.
So I don't want to speak for her in terms of whether or not she would accept that appointment for today.
Yeah, we have to ask her.
She's not here, I'm sorry.
I just passed her in the hall, said there was nothing to worry about. She could go back to her office.
We can't just tell her what to do?
Well, we could do, Judge Commissioners, with this direction, we can come back to this item later in the agenda, and perhaps after lunch, get a chance to reach out to the county attorney, but not brief her on it, see if she's interested, and then if she is, we can bring that back, and the court can take action. And if not, court can consider an alternate, and we can work through that process as well.
That'd be a great idea. That way, she could also vet it in whether she would feel it's a conflict, or she could feel comfortable in that. So that would be great, if we could do that in postponing.
And if, I don't know, I would suggest also reaching out to the folks at the TERS to see if there's a possibility of having staff, because I know that on other TERS boards, there's a lot of people that are not elected officials.
And there was a conversation that we did have, and that we did work through, and initially, that was what we were pushing for, was to meet the court's interest of two court members and then an administrative staffer. But their response was, they wanted it to be elected officials, who they feel are the most accountable directly to the public.
So that was the compromise, instead of just having two members from the county to go up to three, but it would have to be another elected official.
So we'll reach out to the county attorney, and see if we have a chance to discuss it with her, and then we can come back to this item after lunch. We'll work with Ms. Manazios to bring it back into the order in the agenda later this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica?
Item number 11, American Rescue Plan, ARP Project Number 1371. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the project funding recommendation for applicants of the El Paso County American Rescue Plan Act Notice of Funding Opportunity for Nonprofit Agencies. And just for information, we do have one speaker signed up for this item.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Kristi Martinez with County Administration. I have, we have a lot of the slides that were on the previous presentation sent over, that we have a new slide here at the beginning to discuss the week of feedback, a recap of the week of feedback that we received based off of the court's suggestion last week. So just to kind of recap that, and what that period included, we had two agencies that were recommended previously by us, request clarification, particularly with regards to the reduction in the funds that would be allotted, and what that would mean for their timelines and their deliverables, that we did speak to them for a bit. As well as, we did have three agencies that we spoke to that were not recommended previously, who requested information on their proposal, including information on any comments made by the external review board and the score themselves. We also had one alternate agency submit supplemental information in addition to what had been previously submitted. Based off of these conversations that we had with each of all of these agencies, our office concluded there was no substantial information added to warrant a modification to the recommendation. You can see I have the last bullet point here for the approval, to recommend, approve the recommended recipient list as presented by staff previously. I do want to mention that I do have slides on any of the agencies here. I don't want to go through all of them. I know it was quite a lengthy time last time. So if there was any that anyone wanted to speak about individually, I'd be more than happy to, or I could go through all of them, if that was your wish. In addition to that, I also wanted to just provide clarification on one of them, however, which was the El Paso County Water Improvement District Number One. Just to mention that I misspoke on that item specifically last week, where I mentioned that the reduction was a result of the ineligibility of the dump trucks, which was, when going back, was actually a result of the external review committee's decision. It was a conclusion that they made, where they found significant, the committee found significant value in the proposal, but felt that the request for the dump trucks was incongruous with the rest of the request for professional services. So the county attorneys actually never reviewed the eligibility on that one, because of the recommendation that came straight from the external review committee. So I did want to provide that point of clarification on that one. If there's any questions from the court, I'd be happy to answer them now, or if you all want me to go through any of the slides.
So actually, I was hoping that we could spend more time specifically on that one request, because I think I was the one that asked the question about the ineligibility of the dump truck. So is it that that piece of equipment doesn't necessarily pertain to the request that we are going to be funding, or could we get more information on that?
Sure, so going back and looking at the comments made by the committee that were condensed, it was really that, looking at the overall request, I think the conclusion was that the request for the dump trucks, while there was maybe some alignment with the rest of the request for the trail improvement, it was, there was a bit of a split in terms of two aims. It felt like there was a bit, like a request for two separate projects. And so as a result of that, the review committee felt that the proposal was stronger when considering one element, which was the trail improvement. And so, the recommendation, the consensus that was made there, was to proceed with that one, however, to keep the focus, or the recommendation on a focused proposal for the trail improvement.
Okay. Because I mean, I would like to hear from the Water Improvement District, why, if that is correct, that it really isn't so much a part of that project, or if it is. But I know that I couldn't reach out to them, just because we were still in this process. Did anyone from our staff speak to?
So they did, they did, they did reach out to us, asking for clarification on that item, and we did provide that language, or provide this clarification that I'm providing to you all now about it. We have not received a response yet, as of now. However, that was the last communication we did receive with them.
Okay. And I'm assuming no one from the Water Improvement District is here? I think we had one person signed up for public comment, but that's not the Water Improvement District. Okay. Well, that's too bad. I would have liked to learn more about how they saw that equipment fitting into their requests. But thank you.
Yes, we have Ms. Deliris Montañez. Is on teams.
Go ahead.
Welcome.
Can you hear me, Judge, now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So Deliris Montañez Barrios, again. So I requested funds for our nonprofit organization. It's called Dance for Dreams. It's been registered with the State of Texas and the IRS since 2012. It was backtrack. And then, what we do in our organization, it provides scholarships for the youth that are involved in sport event competitions. And then, because of the COVID, we were not able to do our fundraising events. So whenever this opportunity came about, I decided to apply for it, because especially after our Walmart shooting in August 2019, a lot of our community, not just our first responders and veterans, have been affected by the massacre, but also our youth. I understand that our nonprofit, it's small in numbers, it is composed of volunteers, all of them. Nobody gets paid one penny. And that's what a nonprofit organization should be. Most of the organizations that are in assistance in today's day, they have a lot of expenses for their administrative fees, such as wages, and they have a lot of overhead costs. Well, these funds that the El Paso County is getting, which are like 9.7 million for this particular project, it's funded by the federal government. And the taxes from our constituents pay for that money. So the leverage organization, or the business that we have to provide these mental health services to our community, because I know that especially you, Judge, and Commissioner Stout, are heavily involved with the mental illness and trying to address the shortfalls that we have in our community, to begin with our youth. It's kind of like bizarre to me that an organization and a business that do everything for our community, meaning the individuals don't make any money whatsoever, don't get considered to be able to be part of this project. I remember, whenever the application was due, I was actually at the White House, speaking with different Congress representatives and senators, trying to assist save our service members' organization with their mission. So this morning, I actually reached out to Mr. Landeros and Mr. Martinez, and I expressed to them, and then they say, well, you only provided one letter from a nonprofit, and it was signed by you. No, it was not signed by me. It was actually signed by one of our board members. And I have been involved with like almost every single nonprofit organization that we have in El Paso. It doesn't have anything to do with politics, it just has to do with, I was a veteran, and I was a first responder. I was a veteran and I was a first responder. I pledged four oaths. And my commitment is to my community, regarding of which party individuals represent. I was very disappointed with how the staff actually got to the recommendation, because it was to my understanding that El Paso Norte was going to put all the applications together, and the county commissioners' court was going to review the applications, and came to find out, that's not the case. An external committee is not staff from the county. It's actually an external committee outside the county, so there is no conflicts of interest. And a lot of these organizations that are getting the funds have been gotten, have been gotten funds in the past. I don't know if the commissioners' court, I spoke with Mr. Landeros, and we spoke about maybe the commissioners' court can do a technical, small assistance for nonprofit organizations that are not big enough, and maybe the county can provide transparency and accountability on how those funds are going to be used, just like we did with the PPP. We have banks that were in charge of that process. You know, here I am, retired. I was a casualty assistant officer. I was an honor guard member, 29 years as a veteran, 26 years as a law enforcement, the most educated and experienced on this field, using equine therapy, and I was not even considered, or I'll say, we were not even considered for the funds. So again, we serve the American people. We're not supposed to be getting allocated funds from the federal government to provide wages to our community, especially whenever those funds supposed to be used for our mental health and matters that are within these nonprofit organizations. Thank you so much for your time, Judge and Commissioners. Hope you consider it.
No, thank you, and most of all, also thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Do we have anyone else to sit on the?
Those are all the speakers.
Okay. Any further questions, anything?
Commissioner Ogden?
Thank you, Judge. So just to clarify what we're going to be agreeing to today. So I'm looking at the score sheet, and so it goes through Desert Spoon Food Hub, and it has an amount already there. So it looks like that gets us to the full 9.6 that we have to allocate. So is that what we're approving today, or do today we also discuss the two alternatives, or do we not discuss the two alternative projects until we know whether we even are going to have money left over because other organizations declined their funding? What's the process going to be?
Sure. So what, the recommendation, as you mentioned, has been programmed to, I believe just shy of $5,000 from the allocated amount left over. So today, if the final list was approved and authorized, those 19 agencies would then be contacted by staff to negotiate agreements for the proposals that they had submitted, as well as hosting a workshop for all agencies so that we can have a longer, larger conversation about what the expectations are, what the agreement process might include, such and so forth. However, should there be any changes or anything that comes up as a result of the negotiation process where perhaps maybe one agency were not able to finalize that agreement for whatever reason, then perhaps, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'll say, I believe we would come to the court with a recommendation for then funding one of the listed alternates. With that said, we do defer to your discretion with regards to approving and authorizing the final recommended list.
Okay. So that would be getting us through Desert Spoon Food Hub and that amount?
That's, that's correct. And I believe they're the 19th agency.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. And then, and then we'll let you all continue with the process and see which of the organizations decline. I can't imagine any of them are going to decline, but we want to give them that opportunity.
Right. But we did want to have that list, just in case, a list of alternates, I should say, just in case anything happens.
But we'll have that discussion later, if, when it, if it turns out that we have any funds.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So then if there are no more questions by any of the commissioners, I'll make the motion to approve the applicant score sheet, the 19 organizations through Desert Spoon Food Hub on the list, the recommended list.
Second.
Commissioner Ogden?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And just so that the court will know, Christina Satch is Assistant County Attorney. The county attorney's office will be undergoing, based on today's approval, the negotiation process with each of these organizations. So you may see these contracts. It's not final until the contracts are brought before this court for final approval. So you'll see that rolling in throughout the month. Thank you.
Item number 12, Discuss and take appropriate action regarding implementation of the El Paso County American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Portfolio.
Jose, before we get started, I wanted to recognize Susan. Is there any, would you like to say anything, Susan? I see you in the audience. I know you've been a great partner for us. You'll just need to come to the mic.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. We were just here to listen to the last topic being discussed. We were one of the alternate programs, and we just wanted to come and listen to the discussion. We know that there were some great programs funded in those 19, and we were very grateful for the opportunity to apply and hope that there is an alternative means of funding the joint project between the food bank and the county to provide programming for the prisoner reentry program that the county is currently initiating, and the food bank has been working for the past year on the job training skills that would also support the kitchen, which is funded with municipal and federal funding. And so it's kind of a nice overall project that has multiple benefits for vulnerable people in the community as well as job training for the people coming out of the criminal justice system. And we'll hope that there is another way to get that done.
Susan, I can tell you, I know that every commissioner here, the, just the support that you've given us through so many difficult situations. So I just wanted to recognize you and thank you for that and see if, but we're very interested in continuing that partnership.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Celeste, as well. Thank you.
Good morning again, Judge Commissioners. So set on those with County Administration. Wanted to provide the court with just a few quick updates on a few projects within the portfolio, specifically those that are being handled by economic development and then 1150 being handled by economic development in conjunction with Public Works. And there are a number of economic development initiatives that are now being, in the process of being structured, and speaking with Mr. Anan Deser from Economic Development, that proposal should be coming to the court sometime during the November special session for your review, your feedback. Economic Development will be providing an emphasis on providing technical assistance, upskilling certain industries, including childcare, working to take daycares and convert them into early childhood education centers, as well as some specific targeted industries. And so that proposal should be before the court sometime then. There's some lessons learned in terms of process and program implementation from the FASTER program that the county developed in 2021, which are being taken into account here. And the launch date for that economic development initiative and economic recovery program is scheduled for sometime in early calendar year 2023. So on the, on the horizon, on the very immediate horizon, economic recovery will be on your agenda. Also, with respect to 1150 with broadband infrastructure, County Administration is working with economic development to onboard a consultant to help draft a number of documents that are necessary to ensure that the county is positioned well, not only to deploy our broadband solutions, but also to take advantage of upcoming federal grant opportunities through a lot of the federal programs that are in existence. There are some existing deadlines within the next couple of months that have been evaluated by staff. We're working with the Ferguson Group, our consultant, our grant management consultant, to evaluate what those opportunities look like, and also to ensure that we have a comprehensive plan and all the necessary moving parts in place to have a very competitive application. And that's going to be the approach moving forward across all departments to be ready for the second year of funding. There are up to five years of funding in a number of these programs, and we'll have the benefit of having one round of funding be approved. We can see what those project details look like, what the moving parts associated with them are, and then also make sure that we have everything ready to go. So in the next few weeks, you'll see a few items related to this. We're working closely with purchasing on onboarding that consultant. And also, it's a presentation from the Ferguson Group in this month's special session to give an overview of what the strategy for grants is going to be moving forward and how we'll be working with members of the court, with all your offices, as well as all of our departments, to start to secure some of that federal funding and bring that funding down into the region. Lastly, a more, less broad, more specific overview, Project 1280, the Voice Over Internet Protocol Phone Upgrade Project that's being managed by ITD. As the project has gone through the process, the quote, through the DIR, the Cooperative Technology Procurement Process, has actually increased by about 372,000. There were some personnel shifts within the department that led to the project being put on standby while it was reorganized and as the process was restarted again. Because prices are so volatile right now, we actually saw an increase of about just shy of 10% on this project, or over 10% on this project. And so there is a shortfall of 372,000 that we are proposing to fund out of the reserve to ensure that the project can move forward at this time. And so it's with that that I wanted to ensure that the court had an understanding of what the fund balance looks like. And so the fund balance has a specific project number 1530 in the portfolio. You can see that at the beginning of August, it was just over $3 million. And then we added two projects, and we also moved out, as we moved out the medical examiner facility, we moved in the downtown jail security system and downtown jail sewer infrastructure projects, and we programmed funding on those two projects. Then we, two weeks later, swept the amount that was not, was not needed at that time, and we put that back into the contingency fund at the end of August. And then also provided, created a new project for the Transportation Service Beneficiary Agreement with Project Namistad, and we programmed that amount out of the reserve. So as of today, the reserve is at $2.3 million. And we are proposing to fund that $372,000 shortfall out of that. And also, as we've reconciled all the accounts for the downtown detention facility sanitary sewer infrastructure program, there's a shortfall of $250 that would prevent the project from moving forward. So we should have swept that amount less out of earlier in August, but we've worked with budget and purchasing to make sure that that is the final movement on that. So if the court does approve those two transfers out of the reserve, your ending balance is at $1.9 million. And again, we're managing a $163 million portfolio, so it's a very, very conservative portfolio. We're evaluating some of the big capital projects to determine where things are. We should be seeing some movement on the water and wastewater projects in the next few weeks with, the next few months. With those going out for bid, you just approved an agreement with El Paso Water, or with Lower Valley Water District, excuse me, at your meeting last week. We'll evaluate if there's any need to explore other options or whether those projects actually come in under, and then we'll evaluate what that looks like and bring back an update to the court. Our hope is that we have programmed conservatively enough to allow these projects to remain in budget, but if not, we'll, you know, have to look at what the options are for the court's consideration in the future. So the recommended actions for today are to approve that transfer of $372,000 for the VoIP system project, approve the transfer out of the reserve of $250 for the sewer infrastructure project at the downtown jail. Also important for the court to ratify that all of the administrative, financial and administrative personnel positions and their operating costs be categorized under expenditure category 6.1, revenue replacement. For example, my position, Christina's position, and some of the other positions that have been authorized in the budget office and auditors and the county attorney's office are currently categorized under very specific personnel items. By moving them into the revenue replacement category, we remove a lot of the restrictions and a lot of the reporting requirements, which then allow us to engage in other work without having to report back. And that was the intent of the item that was presented to the court on June 6. And moving some of the positions and creating them permanently in County Administration was to give the offices that flexibility to have those positions dedicated to support ARPA, but also obviously begin to work on a lot of other moving initiatives like the Certificates of Obligation, CAP, and all those other items moving forward. So we're asking for the court to ratify that because it wasn't explicitly stated in that June 6 presentation. We just want to ensure that we have that on the record. And then the last one is to authorize the chief administrator or her designee to amend project elements associated with these administrative tracking or reporting requirements and not associated with project funding as necessary moving forward. The idea being that that third bullet point is an example of some item that we would like the court to consider authorizing. Ms. Keller to authorize those adjustments so that we don't have to worry to take up time on the court's agenda moving forward. So we're not moving money around, we're not authorizing the office to move money between projects, just some of these more administrative items. So that would be the four recommended motions or actions that we'd ask for the court to consider this morning. I'm available to take any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Stout?
On the expenditure on the VoIP, how is that justified under COVID expenditure?
Part of the, part of the upgrade to the internet system is also going to ultimately allow that tie-in to be into teams. And so individuals will have telephone upgrades into their teams and supports remote work, supports the ability for the agency to have a telephony system that is responsive and resilient in light of the pandemic, especially because the analog technology is at end of life. So it was, all these projects have been screened for eligibility by the county attorney's office before the portfolio was put together.
Thank you. Other questions?
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Ogden?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. We will work on the county attorney's, reaching out to her, and bring that back later this afternoon.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you.
Item number 13, Purchasing. Approve and authorize the sole source purchase of Enterprise ERP Munis software as a service for county auditor's office to Tyler Technologies, Inc. of Yarmouth, Maine, in the amount of $2,638,338. Funds are available in general fund ITD Maintenance Repair Software pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 262.024A7A. As a sole source item, it is exempt from the provisions of the County Purchasing Act. Sole source will be reevaluated at time of new contract to ensure compliance with statute.
Good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Davidson, your county purchasing agent. This is a request to ask the court to approve and authorize a sole source purchase for our ERP, which is our enterprise resource planning software. This software covers our financial transactions, our procurement transactions, payroll and HR personnel transactions. And what we're asking for in this maintenance and support agreement is to move this into a SaaS or a cloud environment, which will actually help us in cost avoidance on upgrades to these new versions. It is a total cost of $2,600, $638,338 with no change, and it is a three-year agreement. I have the auditors and ITD with me if you have any questions, or I can certainly answer any procurement questions.
Commissioner Stout?
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. I just had a question on the sole source. Can you explain to, explain to us why it's a sole source purchase as opposed to going out to bid on this very large $2.6 million item?
Great question, Commissioner. Yes, yes, sir, I can. We did an RSP in 2013, and we awarded this at Tyler Technologies as our ERP system. And so what makes it a sole source at this time is because it is... time is because it is adding to a system that's already in place. And so we're greatly invested since 2016 in the CRP system. And Tyler is the only one that can add to the existing software system and move it into the cloud or SaaS environment. So that keeps it as the sole source. So originally, it was an RSP and it was awarded in 2014.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Commissioner O'Gin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14, approve the purchase of a data center UPS for information technology department using DIR CPO 4430, awarded to NetSync Network Solutions, Inc. of Houston, Texas, in the amount of $101,218.04. Contract for one year with one option to renew to include pricing fluctuations as mutually agreed to in writing and remaining within the terms of the agreement. Purchasing approved on September 28, 2022. Funding is available in CIP 22ITDINT13IT equipment.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Judge Karen Davidson, your county purchasing agent. And I'm, we're asking for the court's approval to purchase a data center uninterrupted power supply for ITD department. It is a cooperative purchase off a DIR to NetSync Network Solutions in the amount of $101,218.04. And this helps and allows our servers and equipment to keep running. If we have any power outages or any of those emergency situations, this keeps us up and running. And again, I have ITD with me if you have any questions there, or I'm certainly here to answer any procurement questions.
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner O'Gin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You.
Item number 15, approve the purchase of network specialist staff augmentation services for El Paso County Information Technology Department using DIR contract DIRTSO 4167, awarded to Pivot Technology Services Corporation, doing business as Computer Center Cisco Systems, Inc. of Norcross, Georgia, in the amount of $157,602. Funding is available in general fund ITD Professional Services General and general fund ITD Contract Services General. And I'd like to go ahead and read an item 4S from the consent agenda as well. Give me one second. Item 4S postponed September 26, 2022. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the professional services agreement between the county of El Paso and Pivot Technology Services Corporation, doing business as Computer Center, upon review and approval from the county attorney's office. Funds are available in general fund ITD Professional Services General and general fund ITD Contract Services General for the total amount of $157,602. Contract number 20220776.
Good afternoon again, Judge and Commissioners. Karen Davidson, your county purchasing agent. Thank you for letting me present both items together. We want to always award the purchase before we award signing the contract. So this is asking the court to approve the purchase for the network specialist staff augmentation services. It is a DIR with pivot technology. This agreement will provide an on-demand support for ITD network administrators on an as-needed basis. And in the event of an emergency or our network administrators are unavailable, this agreement allows for the continuity of network services. And so it is a cooperative through DIR for $157,602 going to Pivot Technologies. Again, I have ITD if you want to ask any ITD-related questions, or I can answer anything for the procurement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner O'Gin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Karen. Great, great job. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Item number 16, human resources. Approve and authorize a new mid-year position request for a capital improvement project associate PS14 full-time position in the public works department. Funding is available in loan CP Stormwater 22 Stormwater Improvement. Further approve the transfer of $232,271 from CP Stormwater 22 Stormwater Improvement to CP Stormwater 22 Salary and Fringe Accounts and to CP Stormwater 22 Operations Equipment.
Welcome, Elsie.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Elsie West, Senior Generalist with Human Resources Department, Comp and Class Section. The purpose of this agenda item is to seek the Commissioners' court authorization to add a new position for Capital Improvement Project Associate PS14 Full-Time Position using the existing Stormwater Improvement Loan from the Texas Water Development Board. The Public Works Department based this request on the recent expansion of the county stormwater projects and to help monitor and manage large-scale capital projects, which align with the overall vision of enhancing service delivery for infrastructure throughout the community. There is no additional cost to the county, but it will require a transfer from the stormwater improvement line items to the stormwater salary fringe and equipment line items in the amount of $232,271. If the court has any questions, we do have members of the Public Works Department present or online today.
Thank you, Elsie. Any questions from? Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner O'Gin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Elsie. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Judge. If I may, we were going to have some members of the public speak on number 17, but I didn't realize we were going to work through lunch. So they weren't planning on getting here until 1:00. I'm not sure if it's possible that we hear this item after 1:00 when the members of the public were going to, were planning on coming, if that would be okay? Or unless we can go into the executive session items now and then come back to that one?
Yeah, that's, I was hoping, because Commissioner Stout won't be here after 1:00 and I'd love to have him during executive.
Yes, no, no, I'm fine with that. I just, the, the members of the public reached out to my office and asked when we thought, and we said, oh, after lunch.
After lunch, yeah.
So.
That's for item 16, the San Felipe Park.
Yes, 17.
Wonder Warriors, okay.
17.
Oh, seven?
Did you want to?
No, that's fine. We can go into executive session and then if we have time, we, I mean, I can.
We're trying to reach them to see if there's any way that they can get here.
Yeah, I mean, is, is, it's fine. That's fine. We can.
He's almost here. Okay, great. Okay, so we'll go ahead.
Let's go to executive. Maybe we can catch.
Okay.
Commissioners' court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 18A through 18D pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Commissioners' court will reconvene to take official action.
Stand by, everyone.
We're really excited to host a Girls Fast Pitch Camp with the UTEP softball players. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging 8 to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball.
I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics down and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly, so that way when they get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different, different strains. So they separated the catchers and they, they're still running bases and I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports. Events like this one, the camp at the sports park are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location, the way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that they're almost a mini professional baseball field out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the Eastside and for the entire county.
Come play with us at El Paso County Park!
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunity to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We think this park needs more shade.
These are the biggest ones.
It is too hot in El Paso. And so we want to make it more beautiful, at the same time create shade more pleasant for everyone to enjoy. And we're planting nighty trees, set us out of the park, all over the park and in the golf course. So we're very excited and thankful that we were chosen by the El Paso Downtown Lions Club for this project. Today, I haven't counted them, but I'm going to guess around 10 from my organization. We also partnered with Echo El Paso. And they came and are, have people helping. And we also asked for the master gardeners to come from Texas A&amp;M. I know that it will bring much-needed shade and just, again, just a windbreaker as well for, you know, the, the heavy gusty winds that we get here in El Paso. So it's going to be something that the whole community will be able to enjoy.
Everyone has been talking in the news about a carbon reduction type, you know, machinery, some sort of mechanism. Well, nature's got us beat on that and that's trees. Not only do we have a scarcity of trees here, but they also help cool the ground, combat the urban heat island effect. As they grow, they also beautify our neighborhoods, our parks.
This is the fun part of our job. This is what we love to do. So happy to help however we can and just excited that we were selected by both of these agencies.
So we're planting a lot of drought-tolerant native trees. So we got Palo Verde's, we got Arizona Ash, we got raywoods.
Once they're established, they won't need as much water. Create a lot of shade.
But also become invite habitats, wildlife. Everybody who's been a long resident of El Paso knows in winter, we see a lot of very exotic birds.
We just like to do this to enhance the community. We just like to do this, to enhance the community.
I want to welcome everybody today to the El Paso County and Lower Valley Water District ribbon-cutting event for the first-time wastewater project for the El Conquistador Alhurra subdivision.
So today, we connected two more neighborhoods to sewer services. So these are two neighborhoods that now don't have to rely on septic tanks, that many of which are 20, 30 years old, have started to fail, can cause very serious health issues for the residents.
Because you have to be anti-normative, you have to be careful that it won't get spilled, or you have to be very cautious with that because of the environment. So it is a nuisance for the septic tanks.
One, two, three.
Three.
The project, we started this project three years ago. We had a meeting with the community complaining about their septic tanks. So we saw an opportunity coming up from the state, about a million-dollar grant funding. So we went ahead and seeked the court's approval.
This particular project was made possible through funding that the county received from the Texas Department of Agriculture. The Lower Valley Water District contributed $2 million towards the project. The grant that the county received from the Department of Agriculture was for $1 million. So total, that was the cost of the project, $3 million, to connect about 100 homes to first-time sewer service.
So the contractor approximately three, four or five miles' worth of infrastructure that they laid, like if you see behind me, the green pipes behind me, those are the eight-inch pipes that were used on the streets. So of course, they have to get an excavator, tear part of the road, excavate five feet, and there's some areas all the way in Alhurra this area, they went down to 15 feet down. They put the pipe, connect the pipe together to include the service ladder and the service connection for each house, to include those large manholes behind us as well. They cover it, compact it very well, then after that, lay the new layer of asphalt on top of it. After they complete that portion and test the pipes, they went ahead and start inside the property. They connected the service line from the property, from the property line all the way to the house. After they connected it, it's working fine, they went ahead and decommissioned the existing septic tanks. I mean, it's a big relief to me, and it gave me a pleasure at the end.
Connecting families to water and wastewater infrastructure is a priority for this court. One day, we can say that every person in El Paso County has access to water and wastewater.
I think it's good for the community, it's better for the environment as well. And I think it's just a good quality right now.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
We're really excited to host a Girls' Fast Pitch Camp with the UTEP softball play. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging eight to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball.
I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics down, and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly, so that way when they get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains. So they separated the catchers, and they're still running bases, and I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports. Events like this one, the camp at the sports park, are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location, the way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that they're almost a mini professional baseball field out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county.
Come and play with us at El Paso County Park!
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally-recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally-recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name.
Go ahead.
The Missioners Court has reconvened to a regular open session. Item number 19, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed acquisition of real property within the Laura E. Monday survey number 238, ARP 1340.
Assistant County Attorney, at this point, I would request a motion to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the purchase agreement and all other related and necessary closing documents, including acceptance of the deed, to purchase the property located at 1029 Vinton Avenue in Conoteo, Texas.
Second?
Commissioner Ogden?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Item number 20, discuss and take appropriate action on the collective bargaining agreement contract grievance submitted by the El Paso County Sheriff's Officers Association regarding payment of CLEET benefit trust premium for covered employees out on military leave. County Attorney File Number 00422CG.
Thank you, Mr. Madrid.
Good afternoon, Assistant County Attorney Carter Madrid. I'm asking the court to take the following action: Approve the payment of CLEET benefit trust monthly premiums for employees out on military leave who are covered by the collective bargaining agreement between El Paso County and the El Paso County Sheriff's Officers Association. Further, approve and authorize the county judge to sign a settlement and release agreement settling the association's grievance concerning the premium payments, wherein the association will dismiss its grievance in exchange for payment of the premiums.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Ogden?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have two pending items. Are we ready for item 17?
I saw Veronica earlier, and I do believe that the member of the public is here.
Item 17...
It's 16, no? Or no, I'm looking at the wrong, yeah, 17.
Okay, so item 17, Public Works, we do have a correction to read in. Approve and authorize the Public Works Parks and Recreation Department to waive park special event fees of $5,535 for the Off-roading with Wounded Warriors and American Patriots event to be held at San Felipe Park from October 15, 2022, through October 16, 2022. Contract pending, county attorney approval.
And Judge, I guess while we wait for Veronica Myers to come in and discuss the item, I just wanted to give a little bit of, just a little bit of background for the court. So this is an event that's being conducted as a fundraiser for the Wounded Warriors project. And so we have a local veteran from the Fabens area, Fabian Estrada, who took this upon himself in order to be able to raise funds for wounded warriors. But in conjunction with that, because the funds are going to be raised primarily, there's going to be a lot of, I guess, a community of off-road vehicle users that are very involved and are going to be the ones raising all of this money. We discussed with Veronica Myers the possibility of having our groundbreaking for the San Felipe Park in Fabens during some of these festivities that they're having as part of their fundraising, since the off-road community is already going to have a very high participation rate in their fundraising activities. So we all felt that that was a good way to unveil the big plans that the county has for San Felipe Park to the off-road communities. So the idea is that the county will do our groundbreaking. As you all remember, we're going to be making about an investment, about $590,000 into San Felipe. So the county, oh, and here's Veronica, and Fabian, thank you all. So the county would be doing our groundbreaking, and then, of course, then we would be turning it over to Fabian and his group, and they're going to be doing the fundraising for the wounded warriors. But we felt that this was a good opportunity for the county to collaborate with a very good cause. But we felt that this was a good opportunity for the county to collaborate with a very good cause. So I'll hand it over to you, Veronica.
Yeah.
It has been? Oh, okay.
Veronica, we're ready for you.
Well, good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, Ms. Rivera. Thank you for having us today. On my portion, I just wanted to talk about us waiving the fees for this event. We are having, on the same day, we're having the groundbreaking of our off-highway vehicle trails park at San Felipe, and it'll include 10 miles of off-highway vehicle riding. It'll include modular restrooms out there. We're going to have ADA parking, picnic tables, and a little tot lot. So that is a smaller trails fenced-in area for children to learn how to ride. And again, this is thanks to a grant from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, Off-Highway Vehicle Recreation Trails. And we got the max amount of $400,000 with a match of $100,000. And we got an additional $90,000 from them, from the decal fund, to plan the park, to do a planning for the park, a master plan for the park. So we're excited about that. That'll happen on Saturday, October 15, along with the Off-Road Desert Therapy and American Patriots organizations. And that'll happen October 15 at 3 PM at San Felipe Park. So with that, I will introduce Off-Highway Off-Road Desert Therapy President, Fabian Estrada.
Veronica, before you sit down...
Yes, sir.
I've got some liability questions because of the activities that are going to be going on there. I don't know if the sponsor buys the additional insurance, or do we have it ourselves? Christina, I don't know. Do we insure it, or usually it's the...
They will provide the insurance for the event.
And they'll provide the necessary paperwork to our county attorney's office?
Yes, sir.
Was that part of the application process, Mr. Quayre? We need to probably have to have some... Do you want to speak to the... Mr. Quayre, Assistant County Attorney reviewed the application, so I don't want to misspeak, so if I could just invite him to the podium to speak. Thank you.
Welcome.
Judge, good afternoon. Alex Quayre, Assistant County Attorney. When I was reviewing this contract, I say "contract" in the sense of how it's uploaded to our database to review, but it was an application for certain types of events that Off-Road Desert Therapy wanted to have with the American Patriots at Shadow Mountain Lake. And I think now it's in conjunction with one of the American Legions here in El Paso. In terms of the liability and insurance purposes, to my understanding, that was going to be provided by the entity themselves, which is Off-Road Desert Therapy. The signatory, I think, on the latest application is American Legion. So I believe it would be our advising counsel that American Legion takes out the insurance. There's nothing precluding the other entities from taking that insurance as well, but because American Legion is the one on the actual application, I believe we would advise it to be the American Legion that takes out that policy, so that everybody is covered. But as stated before, it'd probably be a best practice for all the entities that are going to be involved to take out insurance policies. But other than that, I don't know if there's a follow-up question from the court?
Just the only other comment is that liability is really important, especially that alcohol is going to be allowed on the premises, and I don't know how that all works out, but I'm glad that you're looking at, you know, that the county doesn't have that liability.
Yes, Judge. In terms of the alcohol, to my understanding, it had to have been... That was something that was originally in the applications, right? The alcohol use and vending of alcohol. And I believe the original application said it was through LNF distributors. But in terms of the county's alcohol use policy, this is not unlike other events where the alcohol license is requested by the court. It stated where the alcohol will be served. To my understanding, the alcohol was going to be served in a fenced-off area, almost like a beer garden-type area. Ms. Myers may have more specifics on that, but in terms of how the alcohol use was going to be determined, it was going to be up to the court to grant that temporary license, right, for the alcohol use to be given at this event. And then, once it's done, then that license is then revoked, or it goes away, like other county entities, or not entities, other county events.
Okay. Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, Commissioner...
Another follow-up question. Veronica, with that, we don't allow drinking or alcohol in any of our parks, do we? Other than the golf course? But at Escarate overall, there's no drinking.
At the pavilion, we do allow.
We do allow alcohol?
We do for special events. So this is a special event. So whenever there is a special event, they get a permit from county administration. We give them a letter, but they have to follow TABC guidelines. And also, it has to be security, so they will be providing security. They're going to have the alcohol, and it has to be within a certain area. So like at Escarate, when we have, in the special event area where we have the concerts, it has to be fenced in, it has to be security. And then, of course, we grant them the letter that they have the permission within that area to serve the alcohol.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's only for special events.
Okay, I'm a little conflicted. We're approving off-roading, but at the same time, we're going to approve, we may approve the alcohol in a fenced-in area. But that does not preclude a driver from drinking whether it's one beer or two, and going back to off-roading. So I've got a little issue with that.
Okay. So they're going to have the event first, the off-roading event first? And then, I think, from my understanding, is then they do their festivities, their concert and everything after the off-roading part is done. So they'll be riding from Red Sands over to San Felipe, and then they'll have their events in the evening with the alcohol. And I will coordinate that. We're still working on that contract, because it's a special event contract of how everything happens, so that, again, we consider safety first.
Okay, so no off... I'm sorry. So no off-roading, or no drinking till after the off-roading event is concluded?
Right. That's something that we can put together in the...
Yeah. He's nodding yes.
In the contract.
Yeah, I feel much better about that.
Right.
And one of the organizers is here, so maybe he could answer some of those questions and give us an idea about the different activities.
Go ahead.
Yes, they're going to do a presentation.
My name is Fabian Estrada. I'm the president of ORDT, which is acronym for Off-Road Desert Therapy. This group's been around since 2016. We're all active, some active-duty personnel from Fort Bliss are in our group. A lot of veterans and a few civilians. My treasurer, Jesse Herrera, is here with us today.
Is he?
So this group has helped us out quite a bit for our PTSD. This is why we go off-roading. We had to find a way to deal with our problems instead of going out or staying home and committing suicide. The suicide rate is so high right now in our veterans' world that, you know, we need to find these issues so that we can help them out, help myself out as well. I'm a combat veteran. I was, I served in Mogadishu, Somalia back in 1993. And I suffer from severe PTSD. And how I got into off-roading was a couple of guys from Fort Bliss say, "Hey, come on out." I'm like, "All right." So I went out there with them, got me a Jeep, and it was not a cure, but it helped me meet other folks, other veterans and other active-duty personnel so we can talk amongst each other about our issues. So this is where we're at now. Back in 2019, we had an event at Southwest University with the Wounded Warrior Project, which turned out to be a great event. We raised about $3,000, and we donated that to the Wounded Warrior Project. So this year, what we're trying to do since COVID came by, right? And now we're back on our feet again, and we're able to do something again. You know, the major thing is here is veterans helping veterans, right? And this is what we're all about, all right? So what we're going to do is throw this, hopefully, this two-part event, which one takes place at Southwest University on the 8th. And we have a special guest coming in, two special guests. One from the Wounded Warrior Project. I have his name and his bio right here, if you guys would like to see it. I'll hand it out to you guys. And we have Kenny Thomas. Kenny Thomas was a Ranger in the Battle of Mogadishu. Him and I served back in 1993 in Mogadishu. He's going to come sing for us, and he's going to speak to us about his encounter back in 1993. So the way our event's going to, the layout would be, we're going to start with this PowerPoint presentation really quick. So this is the part one. We're just going to jump all the way through this. If you don't mind, let's go to the 15th, because this is more concerning than the 8th. So if we go to the 15th, there we go. So on the 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock in the morning, we're going to read up at Red Sands. Everybody gets in their vehicles, which is away from the alcohol completely. So we'll trail from there. Back in 2019, we also did this, and we trailed from Red Sands to San Felipe with zero incidents. We did this as a military convoy for the sake of... So we'll get to San Felipe about 12:30, all right? Then we'll start the festivities with, at 15:30, at 3:30, we'll start doing with the county in the breaking. During this time, we're going to have some skydivers come in. We are honoring three soldiers who passed away due to suicide or something that happened to them in combat or in theater, all right? One of them is from Clint. His name is Real DeVora. He's from Clint. We got Sergeant Adam Connors, who is from El Paso. He went to school at Southwest University. And we have my father. He died of Agent Orange from Vietnam. And the group wanted to honor my dad, so it wasn't my choice. I'm like, "Sure, why not? Let's do it." So I'm honored. I'm honored for these guys to, you know, to bring that up. So during the, what we're going to do is we're going to fly some skydivers in with the American flags. We're going to, once the skydivers come in in San Felipe, we're going to fold the flags and hand them to the families. And then, we also got two helicopters coming in to land there at the San Felipe Park. And those are 086s, which we call Little Birds, which were the same type of aircraft that was in Mogadishu. If you watch Black Hawk Down, you know what I'm talking about. It's a pretty cool movie. But so, and this is where the groundbreaking starts. Once we do the groundbreaking, then we start our festivities. This is also a camping out. And the reason we want everybody to camp out is so that if they are drinking alcohol, they're going to stay there, and they're not going to drive home. So that's why we want everybody to camp out. So during the festivities and stuff, we're going to have three bands out there. We're going to do some raffles to create revenue so that that way we're able to generate some money so that we can donate this money to the Wounded Warrior Project and to the American Patriots. So we did, just off of this real quick, it says 10:30. It's going to be over at 12 roughly. Alcohol sales will stop at 11 o'clock. We're not going to be on 12. So we also did get, we do have, we're in the process of getting event insurance. So we're all going to provide that, so the county is not liable for anything that happens during this event. And what I'm asking here, you know, for you all to give us a hand and let us create some money and help some veterans out for the Wounded Warrior Project and help us waive the fees and, you know, maybe give us some, help us out with some porta-potties and stuff. That'd be great, you know, so. But this is the event, and it's a great event. I wish the guest speaker is coming from Georgia, from the Wounded Warrior Project. That took a lot of coordination. And Kenny Thomas, Kenny Thomas won't be at San Felipe, but the Wounded Warrior Project guest speaker will be there.
Sounds great. Commissioner Ogilvy?
No, I just wanted to thank you, Fabian, for all of your work trying to put this event together. You're a local business owner there in the valley, so this is, you're kind of trying to do this on your free time.
Yes.
I know you don't have very much of. So I just wanted to thank you for your efforts. I know that honoring our veterans is a very important thing that we do here at the county, and the judge has certainly spearheaded a lot of those efforts. So I'm glad that the county was able to assist with, hopefully, with the court's approval of the waiving of the fees for San Felipe. But I just wanted to thank you for everything that you do for the wounded warriors. It's very, very vital that we don't forget the sacrifices that our servicemen have made and continue to make to this day.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Commissioner Leon?
Great program. I'm 100% behind what you're talking about, and the idea behind it is great. I've got just two questions. What are you going to raffle? And Veronica, I see that on your schedule, there was a poker run in the evening, which conflicts with the drinking again.
That's a, I'm sorry. I forgot to, that's an old slide. We changed that. We're going to do the poker run at, from, we meet up in the morning. We've changed that. So we're going to do it in the morning as we're going towards San Felipe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes me feel better.
Yes, sir.
And the raffle, it's really none of my business, but I just want to make sure that you're not raffling out AR-15s.
No, no, no. So the stuff that we've gotten from full-wheel parts, full-wheel center, they're winches and straps and stuff, safety devices that we can use while we're off-roading. And this is, that's the only thing we do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, the way it stands is if we're just asking for the fees, we don't... Actually, Betsy could have gone there, but if they're asking for anything additional, then we'll vote on it. So I don't know if there are anything above the fees, and then we would have to vote on it.
I do have, I've been, I was asking for a stage. I know that you're on the stage. This, we've got to anonymize, like, list what we need out there to get a little bit of help. And most of the stuff that we got back in 2019 was all donated to us. And now it's a little bit hard to get it nowadays. Everybody's kind of tied on money, so. But we're still trying to get some porta-potties, some, we need a generator, some light sets out there. And we also need the area to be, the road to come into San Felipe for the folks that don't have, because it's in the desert. We need that to be paved really nice, or not paved, but smoothed out, you know? We're also going to need, I did ask Mr. Soblosky for some help with the fire department. And so I kind of brought it up to him. It's a great, it's a great thing for, because we're going to need some water trucks to water down the LZ in the area where the helicopter's going to land, so that way they don't brown out. Brown out, I don't know if you guys understand what that means. It's when the dust cloud comes up and the pilot loses visual reference and causes an accident. So we asked, I asked the fire department if they could come out there and, you know, and do some helicopter LZ training, because that works for them as well, because it's an annual thing, I believe, for the fire department. So hopefully, they will be able to go out there and do some training with these helicopters that come in, you know? So hopefully, we get a little bit of help there. We need the sound for the stage. We're still working on it ourselves. But we need the light sets, like I said, and a generator that would help us with the bands. This is a wish list, you know what I'm saying?
Norm, are there any things that we would have available that, sort of, we could help out with?
Judge, some of the items he mentioned, we had not heard about this before. I know that the other stuff, like the stage, we don't have a stage. We would have to rent it. The other things that he had mentioned, aside from leveling the road and stuff, was over $9,000, what we had seen. We don't have that in-house, so we can't just lend it to him. We would have to go out and rent it ourselves.
But the road, the leveling of the road, that is something that we could do ourselves?
We could, and we can, I mean, we could level the road. I would work with Vernie and see how quick we could get this done. And also, because I know there's some things that complicate this. The entrance to the road does not belong to the county, and I think that might be an issue. So there's a couple of things that we would need to work with our attorneys in order for us to get it done and see if we can get it done. If it's just county road and the court authorizes it, we could.
I think in the pressure we have, not pressure, but we have to, it's time-sensitive because we're not going to be here next Monday. So whatever we decide, we'd have to do it today. So I don't know. Commissioner Ogilvy, whatever you think we...
And I think I saw Carl Dwyer, Judge, pop up on the screen. I know that the Veterans Advisory Board supported the waiving of the fees for San Felipe, but I'm wondering if perhaps there might be a little bit of monies available in some, for some of the veterans-related projects? of, for some of the veterans-related projects, that we might be able to at least contribute a small amount to some of the items that are still needed.
Carl, you wanna help us out here?
Good afternoon, Judge and Court. Can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yes, Judge, from behalf of the Veteran's Service Office, this project or event was brought before the County Veterans Advisory Board in August, August 17th, to be exact. And at that time, your Veteran Advisory Board did agree, vote, and pass the recommendation to waive the park fees, which was agreed to and voted on, and which I also support here as your County Veteran Service Office. However, the additional support, logistical support that was mentioned, just as it was mentioned today, but there was no actual cost estimate and proposed budget estimate to consider until, I believe, last week, when the $9,000 were, were brought up. Now, in the veteran's account, which is maintained under my department, there is sufficient funds to, to support a request such as this, but my only concern is just that with all the other procedures as we use with the Veterans Parade, with the Veteran Advisory Board, we've got a process where the budget estimate comes forth, considered for your Veteran Advisory Board, brought to the court, and those funds are obligated and, and set aside to use, you know? But that's kinda not where we are right there with this, 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 this event. Not saying we don't support the event, but what I also don't want to do is set the precedence, because from what I understand, the sponsoring entity has now changed to one of the local chapters of the American Legion, which we would now be doing a contract with, just as Commissioner Robertson shared in the past. I really wanna be very careful when we start setting precedents with the obligation of this money with local veteran service organization to make sure we're being fair and impartial as we use these funds. So, as it stands, this office and the Veteran Advisory Board does suggest the court approving the recommendation of waiving of the park fees. The safety issues, alcohol consumption, and all things that the court has brought up are also concerns that the Veteran Advisory Board and this office have at this time.
When is the next meeting of the Veterans Advisory Board, Carl?
11 October. Commissioner Ogilvy, the Veteran Advisory Board will meet again on 11 October, subject to the attainment of a quorum. We've got our fingers crossed for 11 October.
I'm wondering, Judge, if it would be possible, if we leave any decision, we approved the waiver of the park fees today if the court approves those, but leaving the issue of maybe allowing the organization to, to present to the Veterans Advisory Board to request any other additional support that they may need, and leave that up to the decision of the board. Could we do that?
Christina, could, tell us a little bit about how we can, this thing, we're not gonna meet again, so we'd like to...
Yeah, so a couple of things, Judge, Commissioner, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. So, you are posted today. The consideration before the Commissioner's Court today is to make a decision based on the organization's request to waive the special events fees. So you can take action today on that, and in fact, just as the county judge had mentioned, that authority is actually designated to your chief administrator. So, you do have a policy and your criteria and your factors in which you assess that, and so assuming that that is met, your chief administrator could certainly do that. As I understand it, this item was posted on the agenda today because there was going to be this additional request, if you will, for additional funding. And so, a couple of things that we have an issue with today is that, one, you're only posted to waive the fees for today. So unfortunately, the consideration of the other items, you would not be able to make that decision today, again, because we're only posted for those waiver of fees. Additionally, if there were another request, for example, for, for public funding, for county funds, for some of these additional issues that you had mentioned or requests that you had asked, the court would have to, in fact, find a public purpose in which to authorize and allocate that funding, as well as to identify a funding source of where you're going to find that, that money. So, those are just a couple of the considerations, but at least for purposes of today, you're posted for action on the consideration of the waiver of the fees.
Christina, could Betsy also, besides just waiving the fees, could she make that determination on her own of helping a little further than just the, the waiving of the fees? And that would take, you know, we have tremendous confidence in her decision.
Sure. So, a couple of things. Your county administrator, under her chief administrator managerial policy, is authorized to allocate up to 5K only in emergency situations. And so, I don't believe that this particular, an event, a special event, I think that we've had knowledge of that may be happening, would qualify for that. So there's one. And then, two, the court is the body, the entity, that has to make that determination as to whether or not there's a public purpose to allocate those fees. And so that is not delegated or designated to your chief administrator, so the answer would be no, sir, at this time.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What, may I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
So what, what exactly is a public purpose?
Sure. Thank you for asking that question. I speak it as if everyone knows. A public purpose is, a governmental body has to be able, to be able to identify, anytime you're using public funds, taxpayer funds, 'cause we are a governmental entity, the governing body has to be able to identify that it benefits the public in a certain amount of ways, right? So, you know, the court can decide that it, you know, we're gonna allocate funding maybe to a particular organization because they're gonna do X, Y, and Z for the community at large. So it has to benefit the community, the county of El Paso at large. So that's your, that's how you'll get to that public purpose.
I got you. So in this case, in this type of event that we have, what is it benefiting? Is it gonna benefit Fabians? Is it gonna benefit the new off-road vehicle parking, people to go out there and see this park? 'Cause most people don't know where San Felipe Park is at, you know? And what we're doing is we're bringing light to this, to this park. So is that bringing to a public service? Is it helping the, the folks in Fabians by bringing people in and maybe helping the economy in Fabians by people going and buying ice, maybe buying drinks, what have you, out there? I mean, to me, it looks like it kinda would help be a, a public service to this, for this event.
I mean, that the court would identify, quite frankly.
I understand. But I just wanted to know.
And I don't think, sure, and I, and I don't think that that's so much the issue, the public benefit. I think it's that it's posted, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, but it's posted for the waiver of the fees, which we're, we're probably pretty ready to, to take that vote. I just saw Alexis McCray come in. I don't know if she wants to speak on the issue and maybe anything else that the Veterans Advisory Board might be able to, to assist with.
Alexis?
Hello, Judge and Commissioners. My name's Alexis McCray from the Veterans Advisory Board. So, to piggyback on what some of the concerns that Mr. Dwyer had already mentioned and you already mentioned with the alcohol and motorsports, we also would like to see further information about their budget and the things that they are asking in addition to the waiver of the fees. 'Cause like discussed at the last Veterans Advisory Board, we did agree to waiving the parking fees for the event. However, the Veterans Advisory Board wasn't made aware of the additional expenses, and we thought that it was just gonna be a one-time ask for those funds as well. And we're not sure of what their fundraising efforts have been throughout this time as well. So if we could let the Veterans Advisory Board, you know, see in further detail, you know, what they are actually realistically needing and have a discussion with us about, you know, kinda what's changed in between August and previous to this event.
Thank you, Alexis. And that's, that's our dilemma right now, that since we're only posted to, for the fee, our ability then to help out afterwards, I think is gonna be very limited, because it's not posted for, for that kind of action today. So that puts us in a difficult situation, and I was trying to figure out, would, you know, what other way could we, you know, maybe allow Betsy? But they just stated right now that it would be an emergency situation that she would be allowed that. So, without bringing it back to the court, it's difficult to, to support the additional, 'cause we, we really won't be able to vote on that. So unless you could think of something, Alexis, that we could help out between now and the event, and since we're not having Commissioner's Court on prior to that.
Well, the Veterans Advisory Board, we will be meeting, if we do have a quorum, on the 11th, which is previous to the event, but if he could detail at least his top three items that he would like assistance with, and then we can provide that to your office and as well as the other Commissioner's Office on what their top three items are and an estimate of those expenses. 'Cause like we're doing with the parades, we ask for, we do ask for a budget upfront, and then we ask for receipts after the event, before we expel any funds from the county. So I feel like this event should, should follow that protocol as well.
Okay. So you'll be doing that? You'll be providing her with a budget?
Yes.
Breakdown?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the waiver of the fees for San Felipe Park for that.
Second.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Judge, we have one more item remaining. Would you like to take it up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number 10, discuss to take appropriate action regarding the appointment of a third elected official to represent El Paso County on the Horizon City Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One Board of Directors.
Good afternoon.
Judge, Commissioner Sosa, Landeros County Administration. Following up on this item, did reach out to the county attorney and her office was not able to connect with her. Did speak a little bit to Ms. Sanchez, who has some items, some information for your consideration as regarding her appointment. But what I think the, the best course of action, since the meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 11th, is for the court to consider a few names, a few office holders, allow us then, as staff, to reach out to them, gauge their interests, and then delegate the decision ultimately to the judge and Commissioner Ogilvy, and then we can bring that back for ratification at the 17th meeting, just to ensure that the county's three representatives are there. And the county attorney's office did confirm, it does need to be an elected official, cannot be a designee, cannot be another member of the court, because it does have to be an elected official who represents the TERS area specifically.
Another possible elected official that I was gonna suggest is perhaps the tax assessor-collector. I know that at one point, we had mentioned to the city of Horizon, perhaps they would let us have a little space there in case the tax collector, because I don't think he has an office in the Horizon area where he could have maybe a, you know, a satellite office.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think he would potentially, if, if that is going to actually be possible, then I think he would be a, a good...
I just written down his name, too. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I would agree to that.
Okay. So we'll confirm with the county attorney, and then if she's unable to, we can approach tax assessor-collector. And just for the purposes of contingency planning, is there a third office holder that you always feel comfortable with?
Well, I would suggest maybe the county clerk, 'cause she also has satellite offices.
Who'd have that?
The county clerk.
Yes.
She has satellite offices. They do the financial recovery at a lot of the different annexes, so then maybe that would be...
So that'd be the...
Okay.
The third option? So, of course, Mr. Vernal, and then Mr. Gonzalez, and then Ms. Puglones, I guess.
Then your, your action today, I think, would be to approve the potential appointment of those three office holders, in that order? And then for, to allow the judge and the commissioner to, or maybe it's just direction, Ms. Sanchez?
Yeah, it's just, it would just be direction, your consensus, that that's, you're directing your staff, Mr. Landeros, to go ahead and reach out to those people to see who can and is able to serve. And would this only be Mr. Landeros for just this one meeting? Or how are you...
No, it would be for, it would be moving forward.
Yeah, whoever we decide would be.
And this, and this individual just serve at the pleasure of the court. They can be reappointed, for whatever reason, by the court. So what we will do then is then just bring back an item to ratify the decision on the 17th, once we have the, so that we can present that back to the TERS board.
Yeah, and I'd love to have two, because they'll be in Washington, DC next week, so I would not be able to be there that day, so.
Okay.
It behooves us to have the two people.
We'll start working on reaching out to the tax assessor and the county clerk and the county attorney, and then notify you all on your highlights this week.
Okay, thank you, Jose.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Thank you.
That could, I'm sorry, we'll take no action for item number 10. And that concludes all the items on the agenda, Judge.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all, everybody. Our translators back there, and thank you for being here.
We have a request for a public comment. Give me a second. We have a request for a public comment now?
Oh, did we adjourn already, or no? We haven't adjourned? Judge, we have one request for public comment, if you would like to consider it. It's up to you.
Except we won't have quorum, 'cause...
No. Oh, we're losing somebody right now. We're losing our judge. I mean, we're losing Commissioner Leon.
Temporary.
Oh, okay. What do we do? You wanna let her know? She's right there.
Suggestion, Judge.
So sorry. I was here so late the last time. I figured, Crum, I better eat lunch before I come.
We, we're, so just a second, ma'am. Ma'am? Ma'am, just a minute? Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry. Hi. Sorry, sorry. So we're at the tail end of the meeting right now, and we're about to lose quorum, so the court won't have a body to be able to take the public comment, because we have lost quorum, so we have to stop the meeting. We're about ready to adjourn right now. But what you can do is, if you want, you can submit written comments and deliver it to the members of the court, or come back next week, or in two weeks to give comment.
I'll submit it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
This concludes today's meeting at 1:26 PM.
We apologize, we, we lost quorum, so.